Good morning. The Board of Appeal for Tuesday, May 23rd is now in session. Just a reminder, please make sure all your cellphones are off. In conformance with the open meeting law, this meeting is being livestreamed and will be available online. Just a reminder, the Board takes comments from the BRA, from the community, from the mayor's office, all under advisement. We are here to listen to testimony from you. Please try and keep your comments, whether you're in support or in opposition, brief and to the point. If somebody else has already mentioned your concern, please try not to repeat it because we are here fact-finding, and the more information we can get, the better the decision is that we can make. With that, the rest of the meeting will be chaired by Mr. Ehrlich. Mark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first approval of the minutes of the May 9th meeting, need a motion?
Could I just raise one point? And it has to do with still three brigger. Kevin C., three brigger.
I'll forward that to the Board members today. My apologies. The three brigger minutes?
Yes, approve them at the next meeting.
Okay.
There's a motion on the floor to approve the minutes. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So, we're...
So, call the first order, case to order here. The extension's Case BOA 449-621, 135 Bremen Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, members of the Board, Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano. We're seeking a one-year extension of permits, if possible, due to the flood map changes in this area after we were already approved, greatly affecting our planning and our building design, and also, we're dealing with the NBTA for permitting because we're above a T station as well as part of this project, so it has delayed the project that we are now on schedule.
Make a motion for a one-year extension.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion granted.
Calling next case, calling BOA 41303368, Gov. Street. Is Gov. Street here? Okay. Name and address for the record, please. Name and address for the record, please.
68 Gold Street. Good morning, Board of Appeals. My name is Waldo Levis. This is signed by Oz. I'm representing my client, Mr. Chang. Requesting a one-year extension for the hearing, combined lots and erect six family condos, which was granted on March 15th through 2015, due to ISD processing and BRA processing.
Have you had neighborhood input?
Yes, we have. It's already been approved by the BRA as of April, I'm sorry, March 15th, no, no, April 3rd, 2017.
And you need a whole year, you think?
I think I need a whole year, yes.
Okay, what's the... What's the pleasure of the Board? Motion to extend one year.
Second.
I just wanted to clarify something. So, you got your approval in March 15th, and how, when did the, when did the permit actually expire? Was it March 17?
Yes, March 15th, 2017.
2017, so as of now, your permit has, has expired for a few months?
Yes.
Okay, just a heads up to people, I'm not the chair, but to come to us before your permit expires.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to grant the one-year extension and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion granted.
Thank you very much.
Calling next case, calling BZC 32973, 27 to 29 H Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Chair members. My name is George Maranci, I'm attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I'm joined by my client, Stephen Turner, and by James Christopher, RCA, the project architects. Madam Chair members, this is also a request for an extension. This was before the Board two weeks ago. There was some confusion between me and my client as to who was going to request the extension. He wasn't here, and the Board effectively tabled this. We're back now asking for a one-year extension. Much like the previous case, this is a matter where the relief, in fact, expired in January of this year. My client has been involved for some time with some site issues. He has been looking for a potential oil tank on the property. There was a change in the unit configurations, a reduction in units from 12 to 11 that had to be approved by the BRA, and an affordable housing agreement renegotiated. With all of that, he did lose sight of the expiration date of the relief. We would like a one-year extension from the date hereof. He is finally ready to move forward and would hate to lose a project over a minor oversight.
Where is the community process at this moment?
I think the community is fine with this. It was approved originally in January 2013, in 2013, it was extended. I believe that the Board would like to hear from any representatives of elected officials.
No, I'm just asking in terms of the extension, whether that will involve additional community process.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. I misunderstood the question. No additional community process, Mr. Ehrlich.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
One-year extension?
The one-year extension?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion granted.
Thank you.
Calling G-Card, calling Case BOA 685-280, 27 to 29 North Margin Street. I think I just gave the two cases. Name and address for the record, please.
That Seymour for 27 North Margin Street. We are seeking relief for groundwater overlay, and we're presenting a no-harm letter that Mr. Simonelli has seen already.
Good morning, Chairman members of the Board. Christian Simonelli, Groundwater Trust, 229 Berkeley Street, Boston, Mass. We do have the no-harm letter from the applicant, and they are in compliance.
Letter been provided to the Board?
We don't have the letter, no.
Okay. Copy of the letter be provided.
Is that the only issue that's before you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion from the Board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All of that.
Thank you. Calling the 19th, 9:30 hearings. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 9:30? Counselor, address?
Yes, 90-102 Tinian Street.
And what is the...
Hold on a second. Sorry.
It's halfway down there.
For the record, calling BOA 678-322, 90 to 102 Tinian Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Jeff Drago, attorney for the applicant, with Drago and Toscano, 15 Broad Street. We have been working with the community over a period of time. I know this particular application and billboards in general in this area, the mayor's office and city council have asked us to defer, continue to work with them and the neighborhood on this evolving area, so we would ask for an extension if possible. If there's anything in August, I don't know if that's, if that's at all possible.
Okay, well, and is there a motion on the request?
Motion for deferral. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
August 15th.
August 15th.
Yes, thank you. I'm also 47-49 Walnut Street in Ward 16.
Okay, for the record, calling BOA 676-738, 47-49 Walnut Street. Name and address for the record.
Jeff Drago, attorney for the applicant, Drago and Toscano, 15 Broad Street. We have been working with the Port Norfolk group. We are now going back on their agenda in June. We've made some additional changes to the project, like increasing parking and some design changes, so we would seek a deferral.
Motion to defer. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
You have a date of 8/15.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Address, please.
168 Bigelow Street.
Bigelow Street?
Yes.
Okay, call for the record, calling BOA 603-585, 168 Bigelow Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Don and Carol, 29 Falkton Street, attorney for the applicant.
What's the reason for the request?
We're requesting a deferral. We've been through the community process, and we presented that Brighton-Austen Improvement Association got their approval in April, but in the last week, it comes around attention that there's been some community opposition to the project, and to give us a chance to address that, we'd ask for a deferral.
Is there a motion for the Board?
Motion to defer. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
August 15th.
Thank you.
Address, please.
612 Norfolk Street.
For the record, calling BOA 659-167, 612 Norfolk Street. Name and address for the record.
Rashmi Ramaswamy, 113 Hampshire Street in Cambridge, I'm the architect for the project.
And what is your request? What you're, are you requesting a deferral or withdrawal?
Requesting a deferral to continue the community process and provide further clarifications about the project.
Have you had meetings already?
We have, we are in the process of it. We've had some meetings, and that, we've heard that the community would like further clarification about the program, and we'd like the opportunity to provide that.
Okay, is there a motion from the Board?
Deferral. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
We also have a date of August 15th.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 9:30? Hearing number, call the first case. Calling BOA 660-491, 88 to 94 Lincoln Street. This is showing Charlie New 14 by 48, two-sided electronic billboard on a, on a monopole. Violation Article 11, Section 7, electronic signs are forbidden within 150 feet from a residential district and elsewhere in the city. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Attorney Derek Small, our business address on 15 Broad Street, Boston, Mass, 02109. With me today is James Christopher, the architect for the project, and Dr. Bob Miss here from Daktronics, who did the lighting study, will also be joining us. Today, we are seeking relief to erect a 14 by 48, double-sided electronic billboard at 94 Lincoln Street. 94, the site is on Lincoln Street, which is parallel to the Mass Pike. Madam Chair, the violation, the zoning sub-district for the site is an NS1, Hebrew Shopping District. The rear of the, of the building abuts a 3F 4,000 residential subj, subj district, which is the only violation that we have on this pier. Primary use of the Board, obviously, is for advertising, but the Board will also aid law enforcement in displaying amber alerts, public service announcements. And we've also agreed to do help with the opioid crisis and displaying announcements with regard to that.
I think it might all, it might all be, I'm sorry, within years.
Yes, yes, within 150 of the sub-district. That's correct. We've met with the community, we had a meeting with the BAIA and NEACA. It's their policy not to support billboards, but we do have several letters of support from neighboring businesses and residents. I'd like to submit those for the record. At this time, we'll pause the board and stand any questions.
What is there now?
It's a commercial cleaning company in the building that's there now.
Okay, so there's no sign of it?
There's no existing board.
There's no existing board.
No signs of it at any time, okay.
And what's the closest, how far away is the closest other billboard?
It exceeds 500 feet, but just outside of the 500-foot radius. It's indicated on the site plan as well.
Yeah, you guys have the site plan inside the packet that was handed out, and the lines show the radius of the nearest billboards that are there.
Is there anybody here to speak in favor of the project?
Madam Chair members of the Board, Warren Riley, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we'd like to go in record and support.
Before I take any more testimony, Mr. Vazani, how are the plans?
The drawing's ready.
Okay. You're here to speak in support?
Yes, I am. Andrea Long for Suffolk County Sheriff's Department. Dennis Guilfoyle was supposed to be here. We just want to let you know that the Sheriff Tompkins is in favor of this for public safety reasons.
Anybody here to speak in opposition? Again, we have a number of people here. Just like to remind the speakers of the comments, please try not to repeat what others have said before you.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Daniel Polanco, on behalf of Counselor Mark Seo, would like to go on record in opposition. We are aware that the BPDA is currently working on rezoning the highway corridors of I-90 and I-93, so we were also not aware of the Butters meeting, so at this time, we would like to go on record in support. In opposition, I'm sorry.
Good morning, members of the Board. Alana Olson, on behalf of Counselor Anissa Asabi George, we'd like to go on record in opposition.
My name is Paul Berkley. I live at 44 Aldy Street in Austin, and I'm president of the Austin Civic Association. I live on the same side of the turnpike as the location for this billboard. There are about 15 billboards along Austin and Brighton, Austin-Brighton stretch of the turnpike, and over the years, we've worked very hard to try to get rid of them whenever the opportunity presented itself. Occasionally, property will change hands, and the developer that buys the property is agreeable to removing the billboard. We've had some success with that, but this is just a proposal to put another new one up, and it just, it's contradictory to what we're trying to achieve there. We feel like we've been unfairly targeted for billboards because of our location. The turnpike extension went in in 1965, and these billboards all went up right around that time. And unless they fall down on their own, there's really no way to get rid of them unless we can talk somebody into doing it voluntarily. So, we did not support this billboard. This is actually probably the largest billboard that you can put up, 48 feet wide, it's on a monopole, and I forget what the height was, I think maybe he said around 60 feet, so you don't have to live next door to this to see it. You just need to live in that community. So, as I said, we voted to oppose.
I'm Carol Ridge Martinez. I'm the executive director of Austin-Brighton CDC. We have a targeted home ownership program in the North Brighton Lower Alston neighborhood. South Waverly is right in the middle of that. We have been trying to create, we have been buying property in that neighborhood, getting it out of the hands of investors, and turning it into owner-occupied property. We've bought two on South Waverly Street that have been bought by owner-occupants. This type of a project takes away from the owner-occupied nature of the neighborhood and the way that we're trying to create a buffer on Lincoln Street so that we can finally really buffer the Mass Pike from the rest of the neighborhood, which has been cut off from Austin and Brighton for years. This is very detrimental, putting a digital billboard up over there is very detrimental to creating and continuing to create the kind of neighborhood for families that we have been working on. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton-Austen Improvement Association, they presented to us in December of last year, and we voted completely against it. It is against Article 51, billboards are forbidden, and we strongly oppose this project. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Eva Webster. I'm coacher of homeowners union of Austin-Brighton, an organization that was formed last year, and it's now probably one of the largest civic groups in Austin-Brighton. We oppose this project because we believe that this area where, where this billboard is, is changing. It becomes residential. We need to take pride in our neighborhood. We cannot really have digital billboards that shine into people's windows and eyes. It's just inappropriate, and since the city is allowing all this residential development there, please give us the residential atmosphere for this neighborhood as well. Thank you.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Don and Carol, Falkton Street in Brighton. I oppose projects not posed for any reason other than it's a new billboard. The community has had great success over the past few months in having a number of billboards removed, and this is not replacing a billboard, it's actually in addition to the existing billboards, and for that reason, I oppose. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Jean Powers. I live on Adamson Street in Alston. I'm about a block away from the billboard. This is actually the first I heard about the billboard. I'm here about something else, so I just want to say I'd rather not have it glaring through my back windows. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dennis Guilfoyle. I represent the Suffolk County Sheriff's Department. I do apologize that I knew you were in opposition right now. I was a little behind in scheduling here. The sheriff, I represent Steve Tompkins, and he is in favor of this because we think this is going to be a public safety tool. We want to use it for different elements of obit problems. We want to use it for amber alert, and the sheriff's department feels that this is going to be a working tool for public safety for us, so we are in favor of this billboard. Thank you.
The BPDA, can you tell us, talk to us about the recommendation?
Ah, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. As you know, the BPDA supports no electronic billboards along any of the corridors. However, with that being said, if the Board does look favorably upon this, the BPDA requests that the appellant enters into a license agreement that is stipulated in Article 11 of the zoning code.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have met with BPDA, and we are compatible to the licensing agreement.
What's the pleasure of the Board?
I make a motion to approve with BPDA design review.
With the licensing arrangement that we have to discuss?
Yes.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Motion doesn't carry.
Just stop this, can I have a short thing? Who opposed?
Pardon me?
Who was in opposition?
Opposed.
Okay.
Right here.
Okay. Thank you. Have a good day.
Calling BOA 694-839-89 to 95 Brighton Avenue. This is a mixed-use development comprising 129 residential apartment units, approximately 7,500 square feet of ground-floor commercial retail space and off-street parking and associated site improvements. Violation Article 51, Section 8, multi-family dwelling is forbidden in the 3F 4,000 district. Article 51, Section 8, retail is forbidden in the 3F 4,000 district. Article 51, Section 8, restaurant with takeout is forbidden. Article 51, Section 9, lot area for additional dwelling is insufficient in 3F 4,000 district. Article 51, Section 9, floor-to-air ratio is excessive in the 3F 4,000 district. Article 51, Section 9, the height is excessive, 3F 4,000 subj district. Article 51, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient in the 3F 4,000 district. Article 51, Section 9, side yard is insufficient. Article 51, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient through the lots 51 through 57-10. Article 51, Section 17, usable open space is insufficient. Article 51, Section 16, multi-family dwelling unit is in conditional use. Article 51, Section 16, restaurant with takeout is a conditional use. Article 51, Section 17, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article 51, Section 17, the height is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Matt Kiefer. My address is 7 Serena Road in Jamaica Plain, and I'm here representing Brighton Gardner Properties, an affiliate of Eden Properties. The proponent here today with me is Noah Maslin, a principal and project manager of Eden Properties, and David Chalinski of PCA Architects, the project architect. This is a revised version, an amended version of a project that came before the Board a year ago. I'd like to take a moment to describe how the projects changed in response to what we heard here a year ago, and the reason for the zoning relief that's requested today. As the Board may remember, the, there were several issues raised in the community review process, many of which were addressed, but two of which were of particular concern to the Board. One of them was the parking ratio, and the other was undergraduate housing. I want to address those in a minute, but before I do that, just back up to say, following, we had a large project review process and a vigorous public review before we came here a year ago. We've not only rethought the project, but gone back out to the community and many of the community groups that were involved in the first round to review these project changes, and I think you'll see that we have some significant support here today. The site at 89 Brighton Avenue actually is, it's a little bit complicated from a sort of zoning point of view. It's three contiguous parcels, 33,000 square feet with three street frontages. It's a through lot, it's a corner lot, and it's in two zoning districts, so the list of zoning relief is kind of multiplied because you need it in both districts. In reality, what we're asking for here this morning is, or are, three items of use relief and six items of dimensional relief. And I'll describe how the project has changed and why we believe that relief is justified. It remains a primarily residential project. It's an apartment project above ground-floor retail with off-street parking, and it replaces some combination of not great uses. One of the lots had a three-story building that was a bike store, there was an Avis budget truck rental, and a parking lot on these three sites. We would replace those with 129 apartments and off-street parking for 79 cars, and street fronting, sort of small-format local retail facing Brighton Avenue, which, as the Board knows, is a busy retail street. I want to review some changes we've made in response to public reviews. Well, I should say, one of the things that was raised early on in the community review process was displacing existing businesses. International Bike chose to go out of business, but we did assist in the relocation of Avis, Avis budget rental car to 183 Cambridge Street nearby, the other business that was on the site. There was some concern about home ownership or preference for home ownership. That's one issue we have not been able to address. We do not see this as a home ownership location, at least not yet, but we believe that it is a location for rental housing, and housing that reflects the direction that this specific neighborhood is, is going in and aspiring to go in, and reflects the need in the city for housing. for housing and in particular, the mayor's housing study, asking for housing, not just housing production, but housing for the middle particularly, for the sort of middle of the market, which is what this project is targeted towards. We've, we've reduced the size of the building a bit in response to some concerns about its size, its mass, particularly on Brighton Ave and on Linden Street. We've set it back 10 feet and reduced the size by 1,800 square feet, reduced the unit count to 129 and particularly reduced the number of studio units in the building significantly to 51 studio units.
Excuse me, now 129, what was it before?
It was 138 originally, 130 when we were in front of you. It was proposed at 138, 130 when we were in front of you and it's now 129.
Counselor, one question. The drawings that we have before us are dated 11/22/16. Do these reflect exactly what has been?
No, you should have an updated set of drawings from February 17th. It was approved, we, the notice of project change was approved by the BPDA in January and we filed for zoning relief in April.
Yeah, what we have is the latest site plan is 18 Jan- January. Do you at least have a mini set?
Do you have a, well, we have, we certainly have boards available.
David, can the boards be moved?
So, I'm sorry, Commissioner Psani, if I could just clarify here, do you want to clarify the, I think I had the sequence wrong, so Noah's going to clarify the sequence.
No, all we want to make sure is that that which we approved today reflects what has been approved by the BPDA and BCDC, et cetera, so.
Yes, I think it does because when we, when we filed revised plans, we also filed a notice of project change with the BPDA.
Again, I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but our drawings are dated 2016.
Yes, it was at the end of 2016 that we began to process the, the changes and the notice of project change.
So the statement, the drawings dated October 7th of 2014 and the 22nd of November 2016 are accurate?
The November 2016, certainly. So I think that other drawing with the earlier date just didn't change. It probably is, it may be a feature of the project that didn't change.
And one, one way to confirm this is to, if you look at the sixth floor and to confirm that it's set back from Brighton Avenue.
So just to be clear.
The sixth floor, it is set back.
So that's the current set then?
I understand the drawings says 129 units, not 139.
That's correct.
Correct. It has 129 units and it has 10 additional parking spaces, 79 parking spaces. This has been a little bit of an issue and I want to just take a minute to describe what we've done there. We've both increased the supply and reduced the demand for parking. We have 10 additional spaces, a ratio of .6. BTD guidelines suggest a maximum, and those guidelines are a little old now, suggest a maximum of .75 to 1.25. .6 is sort of right in the middle of the trend line these days for apartments in terms of parking ratios and we've also done an unusual amount of demand management, if you want to think of it that way, to reduce the demand for parking. This building is targeted toward a middle-income price point and it is particularly targeted toward people. It's very easy to live there without a car and I want to describe several of the things. There will be a hubway station on-site, there'll be Zip Cars on-site, there will be rent credits for hubway, Zip Car and Uber and Lyft, a free T-Pass for every unit when you sign up for a unit, a transit screen in the lobby that gives you sort of real-time transit information of nearby bus and transit lines and a very safe and secure bike parking and bike repair on-site to make it easy to use other modes. So in addition to making it very easy to use transit, car share, bike or just, you know, walking, this is a, neighborhood has a very high walk score actually of .93, which is a very high walk score and it's near a lot of services. It will still, in addition to that, have .6 units, .6 parking spaces per unit. There was also some concern about undergraduates and that given its location in Alston, it would become filled with undergraduates. We've also taken some measures there. I mentioned we reduced the number of studio units. I'm not sure that's the most important factor because students certainly rent larger units as well, but we have agreed to cap the number of undergraduates to one-third of the units and to one resident per bedroom across all of the units. And we are going to have a sort of a one-strike policy. We're going to, from a management point of view, certainly be policing lease violations and institute a one-strike policy. If you violate lease rules on behavior in the building, you're gone. So we've taken those special steps as well to address the main issues that we heard.
Just practically, how, how is that done? If it's being leased out, if you get up to that cap and someone identifies themselves on the ground?
Exactly. It'll be, the question will be asked in rental applications and exactly right. And it'll be memorialized in the cooperation agreement with the BPDA, which was part of the notice of project change approval.
Just a couple more questions. So tell us what the breakdown of the units are in their square footage.
The breakdown is 51 studios. We began with 83 studios, reduced it to 54 and now have reduced it further to 51 studios. 32 one-bedrooms, 27 one-beds plus, one-beds plus a den and 19 two-beds.
And a square footage, please?
Want to talk about the range of unit size?
Sure. David Chalinski with Prolets Chalinski Associates, working back through that same list that Matt just shared with you. Studios average size is 508, one-bedroom average size 616, one-bedroom den average size 775 square feet and two-bedroom average size 865 square feet.
And affordables?
There will be, the affordable inclusionary development compliance will be entirely on-site, 17 on-site units at 70% of median income.
So in reference to the one resident per bedroom policy, those units that are one-bedroom plus den, is that a one-bedroom or, so what is the anticipated number of residents in that?
For the, for the undergraduate, for the undergraduates, it would be only one undergrad in the one-bedroom plus dens. And I would say that the, the one-bedroom plus dens as a unit type came up during the community process as a, as a response to folks who were saying, part of what doesn't exist in the market in Alston is an ability for a couple and a child or to have, especially today with working folks, to have a home office as well. And that's, that's the concept with that unit.
And the other question is related, is related to the parking and the steps that you've taken to decrease the demand. We've seen some projects that have come before us with the piece about T-Passes and we're not sure that that has been memorialized and continues to be a policy. What, you know, these units may start off as apartments but may end up as condos. How do we know that these protections will be in place? Building is there. How do we, how are we assured that these, these systems will be in place to monitor that?
Right. They will be in the TAPA that we'll be signing. We've been, you know, through Article 80 review, the Boston Transportation Department's been involved and, by the way, signed off on this parking ratio. I think they think it's appropriate and we will be signing a TAPA, Transportation Access Plan Agreement, which will have these commitments memorialized.
And in addition to that, in the TAPA, it requires annual certification. So they review projects annually.
So they'll review it for the T-Pass allocation and other things like that?
Yeah, because all of these things are listed in the TAPA as mitigation measures.
Okay, thank you.
Just doing a quick math, so the 17 units that are affordable out of the 129, that's a 30%, that's city policy.
Yes.
Couple of violations involve a restaurant with takeout. I assume you don't have a tenant for the restaurant just now, right?
No, we don't.
So I believe we can't grant that.
Yes, yes, our policy is not to give you a pocket, pocket takeout unless we know exactly who the tenant is.
Well, we are happy to have conditions attached to that. I know the concern sometimes about takeout is the, you know, particularly the amount of trash it generates on the sidewalk from takeout use and often the board has granted that with provisos about, you know, trash patrols, about, you know, pest control sometimes is an issue.
But it would be granted when there is an applicant who has some potential track record.
Right.
So I think what Jared said is that it's not a pocket thing that you fill in later, so we would suggest somebody come in separately.
You can do that. This has been actually asked for by the neighborhood.
Yeah, that's part of why we put it in the relief is that it was part of the process to get that type of use in the, in the building.
Something they have to come back to.
Yeah. Weeners.
Okay, Mr. Psani, how are the drawings?
Drawings are adequate as always.
All right. Is there anybody here to speak in favor of the project?
I believe there is.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Warren Riley, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. The applicant conducted extensive community outreach by additional visits to the civic associations. They have the support of the Brighton-Alston Improvement Association, they have the support of local groups. I have a letter of support from the Department of Neighborhood Development and they have an approval from the IAG and the BPDA. Thank you.
Once again, I see a large number of people. Please, keep the statements brief and don't repeat what others have said before you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Madam Chair, members, my name is Mark Ciomo, Alston-Brighton District City Councilor. I stand before you in strong support of this proposal. I understand the concerns. I believe the proponents have addressed those concerns. I'm a strong proponent of homeownership. I think if you know this area, this site, it can stand the density. It can also, I believe it's appropriate use to be rental. It's also, I took my first train out of Boston Landing. It's a 13-minute walk to Boston Landing. It's a four-minute bike ride to Boston Landing, which, which allows people greater access to downtown and points west. So I see this as a real transit-oriented development that can take the density. They did recess the building at the wishes of the community. They reduced the density, so I just want to go on record in support. Thank you.
Good morning, members of the board. I'm Alana Olson here on behalf of Boston City Councilor-at-Large Anisa Savi George. She would like to echo the sentiments of the District Councilor, Mark Ciomo. She's been watching this project unfold through its various iterations and community process and would like to say that she really feels that this project on its merits respects the context of where it is, is very thoughtful to both Gardner Street and Brighton Avenue as a gateway into a thriving small business community, which is Alston Village. She would like to go on record in support of this project and thank you very much for your consideration.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan on behalf of City Councilor-at-Large Michael Flaherty, echoing the sentiments of Councilor Ciomo. Council to go on record in support.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Phil Cohen coming down from upstairs. The BPDA Board approved this project on February 11th, 2016 and again on January 12th of this year. In particularly, in particular, we recognize the need for more middle-income housing in this area. We believe that the studios in one-bedrooms being proposed will be less appealing than multi-bedrooms for students, but we are also very excited to enter into a cooperation agreement where the development team will be required that no more than one-third of the units will be rented out to students and generally attempting to reduce traffic. We actually encourage lower parking ratios. However, in this case, we do support the proposal to increase the parking for this project. I also received a letter from the Department of Neighborhood Development yesterday, I believe you did as well, and they also commend this project for increasing middle-income housing and see it as an avenue for more ownership in the area. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Minor Perez representing the carpenters union. On behalf of the hundreds of members that live and work throughout the city of Boston would like to go on record in support.
My name is Carol Rich Martinez. I was on the IAG. I work at 20 Linden Street and I live in Brighton. There are three points that I just want to make to you guys that I don't think that I made as well as I should have the last time I was here. This is a very challenging corner. Linden Street is one of the most difficult streets in our community. If you do any kind of nightly visits with the police over there, there is a lot of unsavory stuff going on and this part of Linden Street in particular is very, very difficult. So I just want to make it very clear that this is a revitalization program, project, that the IAG worked hard to design the windows so that they would look out onto Linden Street. The fact that there are going to be much fewer students living there is a stabilizing factor for a neighborhood that some refer to as the student ghetto. So that's number one. Number two, you're going to, rents are starting to stabilize in Alston-Brighton, which was the intent of the mayor's housing plan, was to create more housing so there was more supply and, and that would stabilize rents. So you're going to hear from a lot of investors, I would imagine, in the next couple of months who are concerned about their rents going down in small properties in particular. They've been able to rent them out regardless of the condition of the property at very high rents. I would urge you to remember that, you know, housing policy needs to be based on what's best for the city residents and not necessarily what's best for investors. And then number three, a lot of people are going to talk to you about homeownership on this corner. I would tell you that I have worked in homeownership housing for 30 years and we need to remember what's happened in the past and what could happen again in the future when we talk about homeownership housing. This corner is not ready for homeownership housing. We run a home buying mentor program. We would not counsel anybody to buy a house on this corner at this moment in time. Housing needs, homeownership housing needs to at least allow for a person to live in it seven to 10 years and this is not going to be able, this is not a place where people are necessarily going to be able to do that. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Good morning. My name is Doug Bacon and I own four restaurants and pubs within a 10-minute walk from this property. One of my locations, the White Horse Tavern, is diagonally across the street from this location. It's a very important property and I've been looking out on it for 19 years. It's dramatically underused. When it was a rental truck business, it didn't belong on Brighton Avenue. It also represents a very important link between a section of Brighton Avenue to the east towards Kenmore Square that is almost all residential and to the west towards Brighton that is almost all commercial. This is a very, very important property. This project would bring life and activity and people and energy to this block and it would be a very important asset to the neighborhood. Another point I just want to make is I have approximately 150 employees, all who work in Alston and Brighton, and in the last few years I've seen a phenomenon where almost 10 years ago, almost all of my employees lived in the neighborhood and many of them walked to work. And I'm seeing this phenomenon now where, and I'm talking about long-term employees who make good incomes, managers, chefs, bartenders. These are not people who can't afford to live in decent housing, but the phenomenon is they're getting priced out of the neighborhood and they're tired of living in subpar quality housing and they've told me, we want to live in better housing and we, we are getting priced out of the neighborhood. We need this project. We need more housing. We need better housing. I hope you can support this project.
Thank you. Again, just a reminder, please keep the comments brief.
Hi, my name is Scott Madalon. I'm here to represent the Alston Board of Trade. Our president, Anne Faldetta, couldn't make it. I'm a director of 12 years and past president for two. I lived in Alston for the last 29 years, a block and a half from this particular building. The Board of Trade unanimously supports this project. We believe that it, well, it provides two of the things that our neighborhood needs the most. One is affordable housing. None of my employees in my business can afford to live in the neighborhood anymore and it, Alston is also one of the lowest, if not the lowest vacancy rates in the, in the city and having a nice new retail space is really important. The current property, the previous owners let it fall into a terrible disrepair. Everything from the, the building- owners let it fall into a terrible disrepair. Everything from the building to the trucks lots, or the drainage and everything, we see this as a vast improvement and a great addition to our neighborhood. The gentlemen who are building the building have been very involved with the neighborhood and the community, holding even their own sessions, community meetings to have, get more feedback, which they've incorporated in their plans. They work diligently and tirelessly, and the Board of Trade unanimously supports it. And I've got a letter for you if I can present it to you. It's got all the signatories, which represent everyone from Genzyme, New Balance, GBH, and on.
Thank you. Please give the letter to the staff.
Hello, I'm Emma Walters, the Executive Director of Alston Village Main Streets. I'm here to represent my Board of Directors. We unanimously support this project and believe that this parcel of land, as it currently sits, is underutilized and a blighted property in our district, and has been for decades. We also believe that this development will add vibrancy to our business district and can handle density in a project of this size. We also believe that this section of our neighborhood needs, has much-needed stability in the neighborhood, and is in dire need of better housing stock and resident retention. We also believe that Eden Properties has set a high precedent for community and developer relationships by engaging residents in the process from the beginning, and continuing to make changes that are reflected to community needs and feedback. We also look forward to having new commercial space in our district, and look forward to working with the developers to make sure that those tenants that fill those spaces are a reflection of our neighborhood and add a better retail mix to our neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're starting to get repetition of the points substance, so please, unless you have something new to say, just name and address that in your position. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabelle Gons, the Brighton-Alston Improvement Association. We'd like to go on record in support with the changes to the project and the strong community support in Alston. We support the project. Thank you.
Madam Chair and members of the board, thank you for allowing residents the opportunity to speak on behalf of this project. My name is Jean Powers. I live nearby the site in Alston. I just wanted to say that I have been involved with the community process on this project from the start. I've watched the developers work with the community to make sure that this is a project that really suits our neighborhood and will enrich and improve it, and I hope that you'll consider approving it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for having me. My name is Galen Mook. I'd like to speak in favor of this project. I'm an Alston resident, have been for about fourteen years, and lived in eight different apartments. Finally, I found an apartment that I like to live in. I'm a founder of Common Wheels, which is a 501(c)(3) charity organization that focuses on bicycle safety and bicycle improvements in Alston and Brighton. I've also been a member of the Boston Bikes Advisory Group here at City Hall since two thousand and eight, since the founding of it under Nicole Friedman. So I understand that there are many challenges to the streets, and I believe that the parking ratio is appropriate for the neighborhood, especially I have lived on Ashford Street. I have lived on Gardner Street. I understand the nature of these blocks. I think we do need more apartment buildings so that we can free up some of the Victorian, single- and double-family homes for homeownership. I would love to own a home in my neighborhood that I've lived in for fourteen years, but it's very hard to find appropriate stock. I would also like to speak on the setbacks. Currently, as it exists in the drawings, Brighton Avenue side feels more like a city. The Linden Street side feels more like apartments, and the Gardner Street side feels much more like in line with the nature of the neighborhood, which is smaller, three-story apartments. Based off the setbacks, it will look very in keeping with the neighborhood. This is almost three different facades to a single building, so I like to say that I love that neighborhood. I've lived there fourteen years, and I think this will fit in. I also do want to say that the IAG, which I'm a member of as well, was made up of residents, business owners, low-income housing advocates, and others, and we unanimously supported this project. And now that we've come back and there's a revised project, we do think the project is better than it was last year, but we are also unanimously in support of this project as well. Thank you so much for the time.
My name is Perry Wassbauer. I live at three Cambridge Terrace in Alston. Just three quick points. Number one, the developers throughout the process have been extremely engaged with the community. I've been involved since the beginning. You know, number two, I'm a renter in Alston as well. I've been there for four years. We need more affordable housing, more supply in the market to help all of us. And number three, I'm a director, sales and marketing for a startup in Alston. We're constantly looking to hire, and having good housing stock in the area does especially allows for people to live and walk to work is really helpful and makes it much better for us to hire. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition?
My name is Paul Berkeley. I live at forty-four Aldy Street in Alston, and I'm President of the Alston Civic Association. This project went before us last Wednesday, and we did vote to oppose it, but in fairness to the applicant and to all these people that showed up today, it was a fairly balanced discussion. And as you heard this morning, most of the people that voted, that spoke in support of this spoke to the goals that Noah outlined when he presented this to us last week. He talked about improving pedestrian movement, limiting cars to neighborhood streets, activating retail, new housing opportunities, and relocating a truck business. Those that spoke in opposition to this had no problem with these goals. They spoke to the building dimension aspect of this, the metrics, if you will. We have a zoning code that we spent six years working on with the BRA and the Transportation Department to come up with some rules or regulations that would dictate where development should fall. Obviously, the very existence of your board deals with exceptions to that. This project went to Article eighty because of its size. Article eighty has no metrics. The Boston Planning and Development Agency has no plan, at least for this area. So in the absence of a plan or metrics, what does a community do when they feel like a project is too big? Well, they point out the violations and the fact that even though this developer acquired four properties, he still can't meet the setback requirement. They pointed out that in a zone that calls for three stories, this is six stories. In an area where there's no parking anywhere, they pointed out that the number of spaces not only seem to be low, but they're in tandem also. And they questioned, how does that work? And the answer is, well, this is an urban environment. People are used to knocking on doors and asking people to move their cars. In thinking about what Article eighty is supposed to do, I went to the BBPA website and looked up Article eighty. In the very first section, Article eighty-one, says that it's supposed to encourage development that is in harmony with its surroundings, and to ensure that new development is compatible with the existing traditional scale and character of Boston. Well, this section of Boston does not have a development anywhere near the size of this in that location. So the neighborhood felt that the goals that he wanted to achieve could still be achieved, but they ask for more respect to the code that governs this, and to the kinds of things that make an okay project a good one, and a good one a great one. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Eva Webster. I have lived in Alston-Brighton for over twenty-five years. I'm here on behalf of two entities. One is a voter who testified a year ago about this project in opposition, but he's out of the country, and he just learned about it, that the project would be heard today, and he called me from Europe and begged me to come and declare his opposition. His name is Eric Porter. He lives on Linden Street, the same street where this project is proposed. And I'm here also in my capacity as coacher of Homeowners Union of Alston-Brighton. I would like the board to know that there was real, real outrage in the neighborhood with respect to declining, plummeting owner occupancy in Alston-Brighton. When I live, when I first moved to Alston-Brighton, our owner occupancy was twenty-five percent. Right now, it's fifteen percent, and I base this number on the data that I got from the BPDA website. We analyzed, there is census data that's available that's two years old, but in the last two years, we analyzed all the projects that were rental cash cows that were approved in Alston-Brighton, and I'm convinced that it's fifteen percent right now. In Alston, the owner occupancy rate is eight percent. I think that this is outrageous, and not to pay any attention to it is unconscionable. And there was a time when I was coming to this board twenty years ago, and I gave up because I wasn't sure if the board really was being objective, but then a year ago, I saw the recording of this hearing when this project was turned down, and I started jumping up in front of my TV because I felt things have changed. There is objectivity. These people understand. We are not opposed to a project on this parcel. The car rental site can go. There can be housing there. And I agree that new housing is a good thing, but it doesn't mean that it has to be a hundred and twenty-nine-unit project that spans from Brighton Avenue all the way to Garden Street, a very, very long block, extremely wide on Brighton Avenue. It would look like a fortress. It would be just as viable a project if it was just eighty units. And the other very important thing, point that I want to make, you know, we hear in the Globe, on TV, everywhere, that Mayor Walsh is troubled by increasing wealth disparities, that, you know, there are those, the heads, the investors, the people who get richer and richer, and the regular people in Boston who cannot really get ahead. They don't have enough money to retire. They would perish just living under social security. Let me make this point. The reason for it is because we allow two young guys to create generational wealth for themselves on the back of Alston renters. If they build a condo building, even if that location doesn't lend itself to long-term owner occupancy, it could become investor condo units, and they would end up being short-term rentals, just like those guys want to, but at least a hundred people would own a condo that would supplement their retirement income. And we would, we would have people, regular people, getting well off on this boom, not only the people who are well-connected, who are sons of developers. And when the presenter for the development said that they pushed the building ten feet off, they didn't push it off from the sidewalk. They put, he's saying about ten feet, pushing it back ten feet from the curb. There is no room there to plant the trees. There will be, people won't be seeing any greenery.
I think, I think we understand your... Look, we need to have respect for other people here. You can't dominate the...
I know, but other people were speaking for a long time, too. A year ago, a year ago, they, a year ago...
Excuse me, ma'am, seriously. Thank you very much for your comments. They're very well-taken. Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to approve with continued BPDA design review.
I second that, and would like to impose a proviso that no takeout be part of this decision.
I'll adopt that.
Okay, so there's a motion with an amendment that's been accepted. Is there a second? Second.
I second, sir.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Your motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, too.
It's now ten thirty-three. I'm going to call, are there any deferrals or withdrawals for ten thirty? Okay. Call the next case. Calling BOA, six nine six nine eight one, three seventeen Belgrade Avenue. Is Belgrade Avenue here?
They're working the way in.
Could you please take out your comments outside, please, so we can get to the next case? Thank you. This is the demo of the existing one-story commercial structure erected four-story structure to a house, retail, and parking on the ground floor, and twenty-one residential units on floors two to four. The violation is Article sixty-seven, Section twelve. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty-seven, Section twelve, the height is excessive. Thirty-five feet is allowed only. Article sixty-seven, Section twelve, the height is excessive. Three stories max allowed. Article sixty-seven, Section twelve, required front yard setback is insufficient on the Belgrade Ave side. Article sixty-seven, Section twelve, the required front yard setback on McCross Street side is insufficient. Article sixty-seven, Section twelve, the required rear yard setback is insufficient. And Article sixty-eight, Section thirty-three, off-street parking requirement is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Lucha Trabuco, Noc Trabuco Architects. Just want to give a brief presentation. During the past twelve months, we...
Excuse me for just one second. Can we take our conversations outside the hall, please?
During the past twelve months, we had attended several neighborhood meetings prior to the arguable process and during the arguable process. We met and discussed the concerns of the neighbors, as well as received some...
Excuse me, sir. Can you please address the, please first tell us briefly what you're proposing?
Sure.
And tell us about your zoning violations. We will rely on the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services to tell us about the community process.
What we're proposing is twenty-three underground parking spaces, retail on the first floor with vertical circulations for the apartments, and twenty-one apartment units on floors two, three, and four. The unit's breakdown is eighteen two-bedrooms, around thousand fifty-eight square feet, and one bed, three bedroom, three one-bedrooms, about eight hundred square feet. The parking violations, we started the process with, we are proposing twelve parking, underground parking spaces. We increased that to twenty-four parking spaces. We also, the building is also located within two hundred feet of the Bellevue commuter rail station, as well as of Belgrade Ave, which is about five different bus lines that service Belgrade Avenue. So it's an ideal development for, you know, smart growth. The height, we proposed the, the height at the beginning was forty-six feet, ten inches. We reduced to forty-two feet, which is ten feet, I mean, ten inches shorter than the parapet of the adjacent property, residential property. So it'll be a, you know, it'll be a little bit shorter than the residential building which is nearby.
Is that that condo building that's on the other side past times?
It's on the same, same side, but it's on, you know, it's closer to the Howard Chevrolet project. The floor-to-air ratio, there are several issues with the site. One of them is the shape and the size of the lot, which is hard to deal with, which raises the construction cost. We also had, the building was used for full-service cleaners, and there's a lot of contamination hurt, which also causes some financial hardship in removing the soils and the different materials where it contaminated. The setbacks, we are maintaining the exact setback of the existing building, and also adjacent to this, the, what I'm trying to say is we continue the street, the street line of Belgrade Ave. The same size, same alignment as the building on the right side, the same alignment of the building across to McCross Street, as well as the residential building that we mentioned. The rear setback, the site is next to, in the back of the site, is a Vega factory. It was very hard to negotiate the rear setback to that because it's a sheer, it's a sheer easement in the back. So basically stay within that easement.
Okay. Mr. Zani, how are the drawings?
Drawings are adequate.
Is there anybody here to speak in favor of the project?
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dan Murphy from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, like to go on record in support with just condition to height conformity during design review to the pre-existing three families that line Belgrade Ave.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Walter, White Counselor Tim McCarthy's office. We'd also like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Phil Cohen from the BPDA. Would like to go on record in support. Our board approved it. Every once in a while, we get an easy project. We had one community meeting. Everyone is very supportive of this project that we contacted. Thank you.
Is there anybody here to speak in opposition? What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion for approval, continuing BPDA design review.
Second.
Mr. Zani, have you taken also the fact that the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services requested that the height reflect that of the three families in proximity?
Yes, that would be included within the provision.
Motion with the amendment. Is there a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion granted.
Thank you. Calling next case, calling BOA, six seven zero three seven six, fifteen twenty-two VFW Parkway. This is to change auction of an existing office space into a residential unit. Violation is Article nine, Section one, MFR in the CC one F sub-district. Article twelve, Section one, lots in two districts. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is James Christopher, RCA LLC, with the business address of four fifteen Ponce de Avon Dorchester, with Project Architects. I'm joined by Jeff Roach, the owner of the property. This property was before the board several years ago, as it needed zoning relief to be constructed. At this time, there is an existing office space on the interior of the building that is not... time, there is an existing office space on the interior of the building that is not used. So Mr. Roach would like to change that use into a unit and make that unused space usable for the building. We had in a butters meeting and presented in a civic group, there's no opposition. There's no change to the exterior of the building. The only zoning relief would be the extension of the non-conforming use.
Where is it exactly on the VFW?
Across from the trailer park.
I'm sorry?
Across from the trailer park, Madam Chair?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Zani, how are the drawings?
The drawings are adequate, Madam Chair.
Is there anybody here to speak in favor of the project?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of Jack Duggan, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan. On behalf of City Council, Elijah Michael Flaherty. Constancy on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Chan Murphy from Counselor Madam Ali's office. Counselor like to go on record in support of this project.
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition?
My name is Paul Farazza. I support the...
To hear his support?
Yes.
What's your, for the record, what's your address?
Fifteen fifteen VFW Parkway, West Foxbury.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody here to speak in opposition? What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion for approval, continuing BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you for your time.
Calling next case, calling BOA six nine nine five nine eight two eighty-nine Walk Hill Street. This is to raise existing structures combining lots at two eighty-three Walk Hill, two eighty-nine Walk Hill, five seventy-four Canterbury, and five seventy-six Canterbury, and five seventy-eight Cam, Canterbury Street into one lot to be known as two eighty-nine Walk Hill Street with eighty-three thousand six hundred and thirty-one square feet of total lot area, and erecting new four-story multifamily residential dwelling with one level of below-grade parking. The low-grade parking will provide one hundred and forty-seven parking spaces below grade and nineteen spaces at grade. The proposed building will include one hundred and six dwelling units with common areas and support spaces. The violation is Article twenty-nine, Section four, G-Part applicability due to an erecting buildings having a total gross, gross floor area in the excess of five thousand square feet. Article sixty-seven, Section thirty-two, insufficient off-street loading. Article sixty-seven, Section thirty-two, insufficient off-street parking. Article sixty-seven, Section eight, the residential uses on the first story is a conditional use. Article sixty-seven, Section twelve, the insufficient rear yard. Article sixty-seven, Section twelve, the excessive floor air ratio, and Article sixty-seven, Section twelve, the excessive, excessive building height. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Chair and members. My name is George Maransy. I'm an attorney with the business address of three fifty West Broadway in South Boston. I'm joined by Tom Del Saviio of, I'm sorry, Rob Del Saviio of Hembach Studio, the project architect. Chair members, this is an Article eighty large project that was approved by the BRA Board of Directors on May eleventh. The BRA Board approved a revised set of drawings, which are the drawings that have been submitted to the board today. These drawings submit a project that has changed during the community process and is now a project which contemplates one hundred and six residential units, apartments, of which twelve would be affordable, served by one hundred and twenty-six underground and surface parking spaces. The project, known as the Walk Hill Residences, is located at two eighty-nine Walk Hill Street in Roselandale. The site is made up of four parcels that are being consolidated to aggregate into a, a single lot consisting of approximately eighty-seven thousand six hundred and thirty-one square feet. The site runs along Walk Hill Street between Canterbury, Canterbury Street and American Legion Highway. The zoning sub-district is community commercial under Article sixty-seven, the Roselandale neighborhood article. The site is currently occupied by a number of floral shops, which primarily serve the, the three-area cemeteries, St. Michael's, Forest Hills, and Mount Hope. There's also a restaurant and a residential building, dwelling building on the Canterbury Road, Canterbury Street side of the, of the site. I think it's important to note that the Canterbury Brook occupies an easement that extends along the eastern edge of the site, adjacent to American Legion Highway. And the project actually takes great care to include an upgrading of this very important neighborhood open space area, including the removal of invasive species and creating a passive open space use in the setback area adjacent to the development that will be for the benefit and use not only of residents of the new building, but for the neighborhood in general. As I mentioned, the project has been reduced from its initially proposed one hundred and thirty-six units. There was a one hundred and sixty-seven thousand square foot concept plan that was introduced in the community in January of two thousand sixteen. The square footage of the building has been reduced by almost fifty thousand square feet during community process to just over a hundred and eighteen thousand square feet now, representing a, a cut of approximately one-third of the initially proposed density and a reduction, as I mentioned, in thirty units. Still served, the hundred and six units still being served by one hundred and twenty-two underground and surface parking spaces, which yields a, a, a unit to parking or parking to unit ratio of one point two. Co requirement is one point five, of course, as an Article eighty, large project. Actual off-street parking requirements are set by the BRA, the BPDA, during the large project review process. The original building has been reduced in height in response to concerns during the community process. What was originally proposed as a, as a building that varied between four and five stories is, is now a building that has been reduced by one full floor to a maximum of four stories. Setbacks have been introduced, especially along the, the Walk Hill Street side of the site, where the setback was increased from five feet to nineteen feet, and a corner's height of three stories along Walk Hill, further reducing the massing, in, in, in the sense of that building, smassing along the Walk Hill side of the site. Traffic mitigation is something that came up during community process again and again, and the developers have committed to a traffic mitigation plan that includes pedestrian improvements at the adjacent intersections, modified signal timing at the American Legion Highway Walk Hill intersection, and also looking at the creation of a shuttle bus from the site to the Forest Hills T Station. And that would be a shuttle bus, again, not merely for residents of the building, but for the neighborhood in general. And the developer is committed to continuing to work with the BPDA and the Boston Transportation Department. In terms of benefits to the community, there is initially, of course, the creation of twelve IDP units. And something which is a little bit different with this project is that there's also going to be a payment of four hundred and ten thousand dollars to the IDP fund, and that money is going to be managed by DND and initially targeted at home ownership projects in the Roselandale and Mattapan communities. And the effort is going to be, and the intention is, that this money would be used through the offices, under the offices of DND to create housing for people in this, affordable housing for people in this neighborhood. In terms of the traffic mitigation measures, because traffic, again, was a recurrent issue during community process, my clients have committed to public way improvements, including reconstruction of a section of Walk Hill and Canterbury Streets in accordance with the, the sidewalk, in accordance with the city's complete, complete streets program. Signal timing of the intersections in the area, which are currently operating at deficient levels of surface, service. On-site amenities at the project, including bike storage space, and investigation of opportunities for zipcar parking and other rideshare alternatives, and the shuttle service that I mentioned earlier. A restriping of the dedicated bike lane along Walk Hill Street, and also a fifty thousand dollar contribution to Neighborhood Safe Streets, or similar traffic calming public safety program. And finally, support for neighborhood traffic planning and capital improvements, working with the city, which it is our belief is undertaking to conduct a traffic study to determine what additional measures might be taken to improve traffic conditions in the neighborhood.
Mr. Maransy, can you give us a unit breakdown and the sizes of the units?
Yes, I'll, I'll ask Rob Del Salbiio to do that. Rob?
Sure. So there are a hundred and six total units in the project. There are fifty-nine one-bedroom units, which is approximate size, about seven hundred and fifty square feet. There are forty-three two-bedroom units, the size of those about one thousand sixty-five or so. And then there are four three-bedroom units that are approximately twelve hundred square feet.
And of the hundred and six, I believe Mr. Maransy said it, but I didn't write it down, what are the number of affordable units?
Twelve affordables, Mr. Ehrlich, and a four hundred, that ten thousand dollar contribution.
Well, the hundred and six does not make the thirteen percent.
Right, and that's why the, the four hundred and ten thousand dollars is a monetary equivalent of two units. The thought being that those, that that will, that's money that's going to DND administrative programs to create home ownership opportunities, aside from the twelve rentals that our IDP units...
Is that part of the BPDA process?
It is.
Yes, it is.
I didn't see, by the way, in the packet, there's, I didn't see the comments of the, they went through Article eighty, the BPDA?
It did, it did go through Article eighty, and it received its approvals on May eleventh. We strong, we stand in strong support of this project.
How are the drawings, Mr. Zani?
The drawings are adequate.
Okay, the board, any other questions for the board?
I was just going to comment that I thought that that part of the community was more family-oriented. That's why I'm a little surprised at the small number of three bedrooms. But, that's just my opinion.
Of course, yes, on the traffic, the egress, entry and egress point of, for this complex is going to be on Canterbury?
That's correct.
So, how, what was the thinking coming off of Canterbury onto Walk Hill and its, and impact to traffic here?
Well, we, we did study that. We actually initially started with an exit and enter, entry point off of Walk Hill, and that got, raised a lot of concern pretty quickly, even with BTD. So everything was relegated coming off Canterbury. It's the only other option to get in and off the site.
Onto Walk Hill.
Yes. So Canterbury left or right onto, onto Canterbury, and then you can make a right or left onto Walk Hill. So...
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the project?
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dan Murphy from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. After a lengthy and thorough community process, the area concerns primary focus on traffic mitigation, parking, green space preservation, public transportation, home ownership, density, and height. This process also included a strong community opposition to the, as a right aspect to this development of seventy-five units with a commercial sub-level element. So at this point, the Mayor's Office feels that a reasonable balance has been between the development and the community with regard to the aforementioned concerns, so long as the promises made during this outreach, outreach process are kept. These include contributions to the neighborhoods' affordable housing, the slow streets' infrastructural needs, in addition to public accessibility to their onsite green space, inclusion of complete streets compliance, and access to private, the private-public commuter shuttle. It's also recommended that the Canterbury Street step back, setback and height variances are revisited during design review.
Are, are those items that you just mentioned part of the discussion with the BPDA?
Yes, they've mentioned, they touched upon all those during their explanation. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan. On behalf of City Council, Elijah Michael Flaherty. The Counselor recognizes the ongoing community concerns, but like to commend the proponent for working with the community and the community outreach efforts. Thus, at this particular point, the Counselor would like to go on record in support.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Richard Heath. I live at forty-two Born Street, Jamaica Plain, not far from this project. I was a member of the IAG. This is one of the most successful IAGs that I ever participated in. Considerable respect and consideration was afforded my community by the developer, which I really appreciate. The units have been reduced thirty percent, considerable reduction in the number of units, a reduction in the massing and the size on Walk Hill Street, setbacks on the sidewalk on Walk Hill Street, setbacks on the upper stories. And finally, the two other points, I think, the concession made to the Housing Trust Fund is very rare, very unusual, to take funds and put it into the Housing Trust Fund in an off-site home ownership program through DND, I thought was very generous, very unusual, and commendable. I also respect the fact that this change from condo to rental, I think for two reasons. One, in my neighborhood, there's not a lot of rental there. I think the transition from rental to homeownership is significant. I was forty-five when I bought my first house. It took me over twenty-five years. I think that, that speaks a lot for the, the neighborhood needs. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Phil Cohen from the BPDA. Our board like to commend the development team for a robust and responsive community process. We had six meetings, which is definitely a lot, and there were many changes made. I have a list, but I don't want to reiterate it since most of them have already been said. We also worked really closely with the state representative, who forwarded a letter of support for this project. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Minor Perez, representing the carpenters' union. On behalf of the hundreds of members that live and work for the city of Boston, would like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Please line up at the podium.
Good morning, Chair, and good morning, board members. I'm the district counselor for this area, and I'm here to speak in opposition. I will tell you, it was a difficult decision because this was a robust process, involved seven community meetings, six meetings with the BPDA, and I was involved with some of those meetings as well. A lot of concessions on behalf of the developer, who maybe started off a little rocky, rocky, but ultimately ended on some, I think, great community benefits. But we did extensive outreach for this project, and because the majority of the residents in the area oppose this project, I frankly have to stand with them. I think one of the biggest concerns was obviously affordability and the number of units that are affordable. I think another concern had to do with the greenway overlay protection and real concerns about whether or not this developer would honor those protections. And then lastly, transportation and traffic calming measures. I will say, I can't put all that on the developer. I think we have to do a better job as a city when it comes to those issues, but at the end of the day, I have to stand in opposition to this project. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, board members.
Thank you. I would just add, the Counselor talked about affordability, greenway, and transportation. I would ask the people, not necessarily repeat what's been said...
Okay. Madam Chair, members of the... I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. I couldn't hear you. Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Counselor, and Esri Savi, Georgia's office, Echo Counselor Campbell, sentiments in oppose this project. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ricky Oder. I'm a co-leader of the Mount Hope Canterbury Neighborhood Association that represents neighborhoods in the middle section of American Legion, right where this site is, this building site. We've been at least six community meetings, and each one, there's been boisterous opposition. All the letters, all the letters were sent to the BPDA on this project, seventy-two percent are in opposition, eighteen percent support, ten are neutral. That's a four to one opposition on this. As, as I was saying, American Legion is a Parkway. It has green belt protection, just like the J-Way or any other. There's supposed to be a green belt protection of review because this site is in that zone. But one of the variances being asked for, I believe, is to get rid of that overview. It'd be a different set of eyes and a different department that would determine whether it's appropriate to be greenway. The whole purpose of this, of that oversight, of the greenbelt protection, is to help maintain the looks of it, that it, we have a hundred, hundreds of trees on either side, having a large building sky up above the trees is not what we need on a Parkway. One of the, we have poor public transportation. Everyone in our neighborhood either has one, two, maybe sometimes three cars, not everyone, but most everyone. We, a mile, it'd be a mile walk from here to the orange line. I don't think the off-street parking ratio is good enough. The neighboring streets are a problem with parking and, and, and traffic. And what's going to happen is these neighbors, the residents will be parking on the street. I have submitted a report. I'm just kind of hitting the highlights on it. I hope you have the time to look at it. We, we do recognize the hard work that the developer and his team have put into this project. We do appreciate their attention to restoring the open spaces and the, along Canterbury Brook. And they're planning to buy this shuttle bus. That may help. But we feel this height is still too high, and the parking ratio is not good enough, among other things. We're also thinking, but I do, I think there may be a solution to this. This is my last point. The last report from the... The last report from the BPDA, we finally found out that the owner of the land of these five parcels, the owners, it's really a little less than two acres, 1.83 usable, is asking for $7 million for this, $7 million. It's assessed at maybe, with the buildings, at 2.3. The land, less than a million. I did some little study, I think the market value is maybe two and a half, three million. So, Developer comes to us, and he says, "I can't make it smaller, the numbers don't work." Well, no wonder, he's got $7 million to pay off on the land. And the only reason that will possibly happen is if you overlook all these violations. That's the only way this guy's going to get $7 million. If he gets his $3 million, maybe, you know, it'll have to be smaller. I think that's an important point.
Okay, thank you. Again, we've heard about the height, about the affordability, about the greenway protection, transportation, and parking, so just ask, unless you have something new to say, just state your name and record in opposition.
Well, my name is Faith Gerdler, and I live at 73 Wenham Street, which is right down the street, towards the Hyde Park End. I just, yeah, I have to say, I'm definitely opposing this measure, because, you know, to quote the poet Joyce Kilmer, "I'm sure I'll never see a condo park as lovely as a tree." And I just hate the thought, this is going to be like this massive fortress in a really residential area of two stories. And I'm not opposed to condos or apartments there, I'm just opposed to the height. The height is what really horrifies me, and there's a reason we live there. We live there because it's low-scale. And just to see something this massive, like a fortress looming, where there was, you know, trees and parks and one-family houses, and you know, that's why I'm just totally opposed. And I also have to say that getting from there to Forest Hills, it is not a walking distance, it is not. And that's why they keep saying, "Oh, you know, it'll be okay because we have the shuttle bus." No, it's just going to be a monstrosity.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Craig Panzer, I'm a resident at 18 Woodborne Road, closer to Forest Hills in this development, and I wanted to be eyes on the ground to underscore that it is not walkable. I do cycle, I'm a minority of eight residents, my neighbors, that are closer and adjacent to Walk Hill Street. Only one other neighbor rides the train, all others drive. Especially in the winter, it is not safe on sidewalks, and people think that I'm crazy for cycling.
Good morning, my name is Eugenie Williams. I live at 26 Monk Calvary Road. I've been living in this Roseland area for the past 22 years. I want, I'm not going to be repeating the points that have been made before, I'm here to say I do not support this project. And one of my main concerns is the incompatibility of such a structure with a neighborhood as the one that we live in. It's an established residential neighborhood, consisting mainly of working-class residents. So, in this neighborhood, you find triple-deckers, you find townhouses, you find single-family houses. And when we have a structure that comes and imposes its presence, it's requesting a variance of 20.5 feet higher than the existing buildings, it causes us, the regular working-class people who live in the neighborhood, it causes us concern. So, based on the points that have been made before, which I really don't want to repeat, and based on the fact that the regulations are stated that provide a vision and clear guidance for neighborhoods like us to protect neighborhoods from imposing structure. And I quote from Part C of that regulation, which says that "The design of any structure must be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. This design, in its present form, is not compatible with our neighborhood, will not enhance our neighborhood. Therefore, I do not support it."
Thank you very much. Mr. Marcy, could you speak to the issue of the green belt protection and what obligations exist?
As part of the project, Mr. Ehrlich, there is a large setback on the American Legion Highway side. As I mentioned at the top of my presentation, the American Legion side of the property is where the Canterbury Brook lies. Not only have my clients, from the beginning, agreed to a large, maintain a large open-space area there along that easement, but have actually committed to making improvements to the Canterbury Brook, removal of invasive species, creating passive open space, again, not simply for the residents of the building, but for the neighborhood. So, there is a great deal of passive open space evidenced on the site plan that is part of the project. On the issues of transportation, again, I would point out that there are more parking spaces than proposed rental units here, 126 spaces for the 106-approved units. Nonetheless, my clients are still providing, as is required under a large project review, for ample bicycle storage at the property and a commitment to working with the city to implement a shuttle to Forest Hills. So, it's not as if everybody would be relying on the shuttle, it's not as if everybody would be relying on private motor vehicles. But the combination of a 1.2 parking ratio, the creation of a shuttle, and the availability of alternative modes of transportation, we're confident of more than satisfy what the transportation needs of residents of this building would be.
Okay, any questions from the board? Much pleasure, the board.
Motion for approval, continued BRA design review.
Second.
All of the, all of the favor?
Aye.
All of both? Motion carries.
Calling a next case. Calling BOA 688-874, seven to 11, Belina Place. This is to construct three residential townhouse units with three bedrooms and one and a half baths in each. The building will be two and a half stories tall, with two garage parking spaces and one exterior off-street space. The building will be a wood-framed building. The violation's Article 60, Section 9, insufficient additional lot area for dwelling unit. Article 60, Section 9, the roof over the front porch and bay windows creates an insufficient front yard setback. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Bob Vixxer, attorney for the applicant, Goodwin Proctor, 100 Northern Avenue in Boston. In September of last year, the Department of Neighborhood Development designated Habitat for Humanity as the developer for this site, to develop three units of housing. We are requesting two items of relief. The first is for a relief from the minimum lot size requirement of just 25 square feet. That relief will allow a third unit of housing to be developed on the site. And the second is for some minor protrusions into the front yard to accommodate a roof overhang and some bay windows. The project has been received quite favorably by the community, there are letters of support on record with the board, and I have some copies of those to be provided as well. And the last item I have is just a copy of a certified and stamped copy of the plot plan that I'd like to put in for the record. I'm here with George O'Malley, the senior project director for Habitat, as well as Lark Palermo, the CEO for Habitat of Greater Boston, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about the project.
Got questions from the board? Is anyone here to speak in favor of the project?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Sean Cheatham, councillor Andrea Campbell's office, would like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan. On behalf of City Council at Large Michael Flaherty, council is going to record in support.
Good morning, members of the board, with George, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I'd like to go on record in support. The Civic Association Codman Square Neighborhood Council is in support of this project. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Minor Perez, representing the carpenters union. Would like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Christopher Rooney, the Department of Neighborhood Development. DND would like to go on record in support of the project.
Is anyone here to speak in opposition? Much pleasure, the board.
A motion to approve with continued, Jeff, do you need BPDA? Yeah, continued BPDA design review.
Second.
All of the favor?
Aye.
All of the votes? Both of them grant. We're requesting the board number for a five-minute recess. We're going to really keep it to five minutes, we will reconvene at 11:15.
Calling a next case. Calling BOA 694-278-246 Norwell Street. This is new construction of a six-family residential building located at 246 Norwell Street, Dorchester. Violation's Article 65, Section 8, a multifamily dwelling is forbidden in the 3F600 sub-district. Article 65, Section 41, insufficient number of off-street parking spaces. Article 65, Section 42.2, the front setback must be conforming to the existing building alignment. Article 65, Section 9, the lot area is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the floor area ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. And Article 65, Section 9, the number of stories is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Travis Lee, 60 Ocean Street, Dorchester.
Can you tell us about the project, please?
Yes, good morning, members of the board. I'm joined today by legal counsel from Klein Hornig, and our designers from Place Taylor Architects, here to propose a new construction, six-family building on Norwell Street in Dorchester, just about a five-minute walk west of Codman Square, about a block and a half from the commuter rail Talbot Station, Train Station. The six units will all be two bedrooms, approximately 750, 760 square feet each, and we have spent about eight months working with the community, have been to over six civic group meetings, and have worked very closely to come up with a project that folks are very excited about in the neighborhood. The elected officials are in strong support, and the Mayor's Office is in strong support. We are committed in this project to very high energy efficiencies and sustainable design, as well as rents that are 80 to 85 percent of market rent. So, we call this workforce housing, mass housing. The lender has a fantastic workforce housing loan fund that we'll be using to restrict the rents on these units in perpetuity. So, I'd like, now I'd like to hand it over to Jacob Taylor to work through the variances.
So, a little bit about the relief that we're requesting. This is a 3F6000 sub-district in the Dorchester Neighborhood District. We're requesting relief from Article 65, Section 8, to allow for multifamily dwelling use. As Travis mentioned, the proposed project will include six workforce housing units. The design is a side-by-side, six-unit structure that'll make the project financially viable and allow for the maximization of open space, while also enabling the energy efficiency and sustainability of design elements. As the architectural team will discuss, they've incorporated a number of design elements to ensure that the project will be consistent with the scale and character of the existing structures in the neighborhood. We're also requesting relief from 65-41 for off-street parking. The zoning code would require 1.25 cars per unit, and we're requesting six, we're proposing six spaces, so that would be one parking space per unit, and we believe that that is sufficient, given the affordable nature of the project, the unit sizes, and the proximity to public transportation. We're also requesting relief from 65-42.2 with respect to setback. The proposed setback for the project is 15 feet. We meet the setback requirement in Table C, but we are requesting relief from the modal setback requirements. The setback of the various structures on this site, I'm sorry, on this block varies quite a bit. The setback that we're proposing is actually consistent with the closest structures on that side of the street, but we do still require relief from that requirement. And there's a, if you look at the second page of the permit set that was submitted, you can see in the bottom-left, a diagram that shows the setback of the various structures on the street. We're also requesting relief from 65-9 with respect to lot area. We're proposing a lot area of 7,034 square feet. The lot in question is considerably larger than many of the other lots in Norwell Street, and we believe that the proposed project would be in line with the density of most of the structures on that street. We're requesting relief from 65-9 for floor area ratio. We're proposing a floor area ratio of .83. That's higher than the FAR required by the code, which is .4. However, the density is needed in order to make the construction of the project as workforce housing viable, and the level of density is similar to the existing buildings on the street. The existing buildings vary in FAR from about .3 to about 1.45. So, we're just sort of in the middle of the road in terms of density. We're also requesting relief with respect to 65-9 for usable open space. We're proposing about 1,840 square feet of usable open space. The design is a six-unit, side-by-side building, was intended to maximize the amount of usable open space, and we're incorporating a number of architectural approaches to incorporate light channels and incorporate other elements to maximize light exposure and reduce the perceived density of the project. Finally, we're requesting relief from 65-9 with respect to number of stories. The proposed project is 35 feet tall and three stories tall, with a flat roof, so it complies with the height limitation in the code, but the code requires, limits the number of stories at 2.5, so we would be at three, which is consistent with the surrounding structures, which are mostly two and three stories, mostly three-story buildings with both pitched roof endormers and some flat-roof triple-deckers. So, to summarize, we-
Mr. Mazzani, how are the drawings?
Your drawings are adequate.
I just have one question. Was this project before us, this board, in the recent past?
It was before the board last year in, oh no, eight or seven, eight, nine, 10 months ago.
How has it changed from that proposal?
It has changed significantly. So, the first proposal was two separate buildings, each building containing two units, so a total of four units in two completely separate buildings, and now we have one structure at six units.
So, you've actually increased the density under this proposal?
We have, we have more bedroom, I'm sorry, we have more units, but we have the same number of bedrooms and the same amount of square foot, building square footage, if not a smaller total amount of building square footage.
So, the two bedrooms were- 760 square feet each.
The two bedrooms were 760 square feet each. Yes, that's right.
Is anyone here to speak, any other questions from the board? Is anyone here to speak in favor of the project?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of Flavio De Vega, we'd like to go on record in strong support. This project will help advance workforce housing goals. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Sean Cheatham, councillor Andrea Campbell's office, we'd also like to go on record in support. We've heard a lot of support from the neighbors for this project.
Hello, my name is Debbie Weathers. I live at 255 Norwell Street, almost across from where he's building the structure. Now, I like to say that I've been here over 40 years, and the lot has been totally vacant. He came into the community, he spoke with the residents about building this, he met with us several times, he's made adjustments, and I am definitely for the project, because that lot really needs to be filled in, and it's, you know, it just really needs to be done. And he's really supported the community, he's come to all our meetings, and spoke with us on trying to do this, and I really agree with the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Laquisha Burke, and I'm the president of the WOW Coalition, representing Streets Norwell, Spencer Park, Dane Millett, and Attenwall Streets. And Travis has been coming to our community meetings and presenting his idea to us, and we are in support of his idea. We do like the fact that he's coming in, trying to beautify the neighborhood, bringing in a new unit. He is willing to offer affordable housing on some of the units, which we really did appreciate, the fact that he's able to come in and offer- appreciate, the fact that he's able to come in and offer these things right across the street from the commuter rail. We've been really grateful to work with Travis, and the fact that Travis has been very transparent with us and also been able to answer any questions that we have had, going back and forth and making adjustments to kind of work with the community. We really appreciate him, and we are in support of this project, and we would like for him to bring this project to our neighborhood. Thank you.
Members of the board, my name is Kareem Lindsay. I am a resident on Norwell Street, as well as a member of the West of Washington Coalition. From the beginning, Mr. Lee has met with us. He has shown us any proposals he's had, he has been willing to listen to all the residents of the neighborhood, of the community, of any concerns that we have, our approvals or disapproval, and has been willing to work with us at every point of it. We definitely support and agree with everything that he has proposed to us. He has consistently been in communication with us to see if there has been any opposition to anything, and I can definitely say, as a developer, it is something that's rare that someone listens to the voices of the community and is willing to work with us. And for those reasons, as well as his effort to put in off-street parking, which is a big issue along Norwell Street and within the area, we support him fully.
Thank you. Is anyone here in opposition? Pleasure to the board.
Motion to approve with the area design review.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All set.
Just a comment on that, Jeff.
Yes, sir.
Make sure that in design review, it has the, it reflects the articulation of the buildings surrounding it.
I will.
Calling next case, calling BOA 695-067-21 to 21C Chickatahbit Street. There's also a companion case, BOA 695-072-23 Chickatahbit Street.
I have to recite myself.
This is the combined parcel, an existing three-family with parcel of 14,560 square feet, with parcel of 7,398 square feet, total of 21,888 square feet, and subdivided to a lot known as 21, 21A, 21B, and 21C Chickatahbit Street. This will consist of a four-unit building. This is for 23 Chickatahbit. This is the combined parcels with a total of 21,888 square feet, and subdivide 14,830 for 21 Chickatahbit, and 23 Chickatahbit for 7,328 square feet. The existing building is an existing three-family, and will become a two-family. The violation to Article 65, Section 41, parking location must be on the same lot line. Article 65, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 66, Section 9, excessive number of stories. I think I called the violations on that one. Sorry, I'm going to go back and just call the violations on 2121C. The violation for 21, 21C Chickatahbit, the article 65, Section 65-41.4, parking and access must be located on the same lot that the parking is serving, access is via a separate lot. Article 65, Section 8, a four-family is forbidden use in a 2F 6,000 sub-district, and Article 65, Section 9, insufficient minimum lot frontage. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Patrick Mahoney of Adams &amp; Maranty. I'm covering today my colleague, John Polgeni of Polgeni &amp; Norton, and with me is the developer, Ted Ahern, and owner and developer of Chickatahbit Street.
Want to talk about the project, please?
Certainly. Addressing both projects together, it is two, two separate lots on 23 Chickatahbit, and the, this lot behind it has been identified as 21. The lots are being combined and then subdivided again. The existing building that you see on the easiest plan, I think, is AB 1.0, and it's an existing three-family building, which will be converted to a two-family dwelling, each three bedrooms, approximately 2,200 square-foot units, and the lot will be then subdivided to be approximately 7,400 square feet, leaving a lot to the rear and side with frontage also on Chickatahbit of approximately 1,400, 560 square feet, and that would be four proposed townhouses with two parking spaces each, three bedrooms, approximately 1,300 square feet. And then, in sum, is the two projects.
And tell us, please, about the parking?
The parking is located at the rear of the site, all on the four-unit townhouses. There are eight spaces and two spaces off to the side.
So, and this is meeting the parking requirements for 21 and 23?
It does, yep. It's correct.
So how will that work to ensure that both parcels are taken care of? Will it be filed at the registry of deeds?
Yes, yes, they will. One of the conditional use violations for parking location, I believe, was related to the parking on the other site.
Are these for sale or...?
They're for sale.
Oh.
Yes.
Mr. Bizani, how are the drawings?
Drawings are adequate. I do have one question. For some reason, I have four cover sheets, all with 23. Is there actually a cover sheet that has 21?
No, I apologize, Mr. Bizani. One of, all of the cover sheets are for 23. The information actually is different, and the plans for 21 are on the incorrect cover sheet.
Is there the same zoning analysis for 21 as...
They're very similar.
Any other questions on the board? Is anyone here to speak in favor of the project?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, on behalf of Dave Cotter, we'd like to go on record in strong support. We understand this project has support from the Civic Association, as well as the abutters, and they are saving the facade of the historic building. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Amanda Curley, Counselor Baker's office, we'd like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, Member of the Board, Karen Foley, Anissa Abi George's office, we echo the sentiments of the mayor and Counselor Baker's office in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Paul Sullivan, on behalf of State Council, Michael Flaherty, counsel to go on record in support.
Is anyone here to speak in opposition? What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All set.
Thank you.
I'm going to go, want to go back to 10:30 hearings. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 10:30? I think we have 11:30, though. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 11:30? Address, please. Go up to the podium. Address? Address?
192 Belgrade Avenue.
For the record, calling BOA 658-690-192 Belgrade Avenue. Name an address for the record, please. You can stay up there. Yeah, you can.
John De Angelis, 172 Keatridge Street, Boston.
Are you looking for a deferral or withdrawal?
I was, I was deferred. There was, there was a question regarding the height of the...
So you're looking for a deferral?
No.
It's an appeal.
It's an appeal.
We're going to call those cases at 11:30. These are for only deferrals or withdrawals?
Okay.
Pat? Address?
173 Endicott Street.
For the record, calling BOA 666-196-173 Endicott Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Patrick Mahoney with a business address at 350 West Broadway of Adams &amp; Maranty, along with attorney Daniel Toscano at 15 Broad Street, requesting a deferral for 173 Endicott. And we would specifically like, like a date, if approved, after November 7th, ideally the second hearing in November.
What's the reason for the deferral?
We're, we're very close to a design change that we believe would meet most of, if not all, of the neighbors' concern, and we thought it would best, and it was then suggested that it would be better for the last weekend hearing of November.
This is now the second deferral?
That's correct.
The issue is, are you any closer to getting resolution? Will you be any closer to getting resolution than you are now?
I believe we are. We're just undergoing one or two minor design changes to appease the...
Okay, is there a motion? Motion to approve? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
You want to give a date? I hate even, hate even saying this, but November 28th.
That's perfect, thank you.
Okay. Perfect. Okay. All right, let's go back. Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 11:30? Hearing none, we'll go back to the cases. Calling BOA 691-500-1493 to 1501 Dorchester Avenue. This is changing from a retail store occupancy to a hair salon occupancy. The violation to Article 65, Section 15, hair salon is a conditional use in a sub-district. Okay, that's pretty straightforward. Name an address for the record, please.
Ted Ahern, 100 Alice Street, Dorchester, Mass.
Okay. Any comments on it, Dorchester?
It's an existing retail space that we own, the building, and the, they just want to put a hair salon in. It is a...
Is it current use?
It was an empty retail store.
Mr. Bizani, how are the drawings?
Drawings are adequate.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, on behalf of Qua Pam, we'd like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Sean Cheatham, Counselor Andrea Campbell's office, we'd also like to go on record in support.
Anyone here to speak in opposition?
Just one question, is are there ratings on the front of this building?
There is none.
Pleasure to the board. Will it be approved? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All set.
Thank you.
Calling BOA 688-675-110 Lawnsdale Street. This is a new heating, electrical work to be done on the first and second floor. Remove low-bearing walls, new bathroom, new kitchens, and extend living space into the basement. Violation to Article 65, Section 65-8, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name an address for the record, please.
My name is Michelle Flowers, and this is my husband, Christopher Mitchell, 110 Lawnsdale Street, Dorchester, Mass. 02124.
Briefly describe what your plans are.
The proposal is to extend living into the basement so that me and my husband can have a room down there. Basically, we need this extra space because my eldest, who is married, is moving back home because she can't afford the rental and the master's degree fees that she has upon her, and we're letting them stay there for a few years until they can afford their own home. Basically, I was born and raised in Dorchester all my life. I work for the city. I attend my community meetings regularly. I'm blessed to have the family growing, and we cannot afford another home, so we decided to do what we can to utilize the home that we have.
What is, what is the height of the basement, floor to ceiling?
The basement was 70, I don't know exactly. It's on the plans. Thank you.
Mr. Bizani, how are the drawings?
The drawings are adequate. Is this a single-family residence?
No, it is actually a three-family.
Okay. One of the concerns is that the means of entrance into the basement is how?
There are three, three means of ingresses. One of them would be an emergency window that they put in already.
Just physically, how do you get down there?
Two ways. You can go up the stairs, or you can go through the back where the utility room is.
Okay. Where is the stair that is within your unit?
Within...
Is there a stair only within your unit to get out?
Yes, they put up a wall. There is...
And that's the stair off the kitchen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the board? Is anyone here to speak in favor of the project?
I have brought some notices, actually.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, on behalf of Dave Cotter, we'd like to go on record in support. It's our understanding this does have support from the Civic Association.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Amanda Curley, Counselor Baker's office, we'd like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Paul Sullivan, on behalf of State Council, Michael Flaherty, we'd like to go on record in support.
Is anyone here to speak in opposition? Any further questions on the board? If not...
I'd like to make a motion, I just would like one further point of clarification. Again, how many units are in this house?
Three.
I make the motion to grant the relief request to extend into the basement, and also put a proviso on that this basement unit space is never to be used as a separate unit. It has the potential, because it does have its own separate needs to be used.
You understand the...
I do.
Second. All right, is the motion made? Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All set.
Thank you.
Calling BOA 669-123-311 Galvin Boulevard. This is to construct a new three-family home on a subdivided lot. The violation to Article 65, Section 8, three-family dwelling is forbidden. Article 65, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, the height is excessive. And Article 65, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Name an address for the record, please.
My name is Patrick Mahoney with a business address at 350 West Broadway of Adams &amp; Maranty. I'm here with my client, Peter Levin, an owner of 311 Galvin Boulevard. I do have some handouts, if you could just give me one second. Thank you.
Want to quickly describe the project?
It's Mr. Erlich. The proposed project, and I will make one quick note, it has changed as early as a few minutes ago, and I'll go through that in one second. It's the erection of a three-family dwelling with five parking spaces to the rear. The, one of the pieces of zoning relief that we were seeking was a side yard violation, and the proposed side yard is shown in the plans as nine feet, and that is the change specifically that I'm talking about. It's been, the whole building will remain the same size, but it will be relocated, or rather erected, 10 feet from the neighbor to the left, which is the...
10 feet from the neighbor or from the lot line?
The lot line, Mr. Bizani.
Thank you.
Yep, 10 feet from, maintaining a 10-foot side yard, and the developer has also agreed to remove a tree, erect a six-foot white vinyl fence, all at his own expense. The three units through the neighborhood process have been reduced from three bedrooms to two-bedroom units. That was important to the Neighborhood Association, whose support we've received, and so currently it's approximately a 1,225 square-foot, two-bed, two-bath unit. Each, all three of them are the same.
Is this currently vacant, Mike?
It is. There's a garage on the lot.
Mr. Bizani, how are the drawings?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions on the board? Is anybody here to speak in favor of the project?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, on behalf of Dave Cotter, we'd like to go on record in support. This project does have support from the abutters and the Civic Association. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Amanda Curley, Counselor Baker's office, we'd like to go on record in support.
The strongest, does handicap access?
It does. What, the drawings submitted, the full-size drawings should have a ramp on the front, right?
Is anyone here to speak in opposition? Any other questions on the board? It's a pleasure.
Make a motion to approve with continued BPDA design review.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All set.
Thank you.
Calling BOA 667-468-35 Melbourne Street. Melbourne Street here?
Yes, that's me.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. This is to remove roof and add a third-floor addition, and no change in occupancy, it's a four-family. Violation to Article 9, Section 1, extension of a non-conforming use, and Article 65, Section 8, the MFR is forbidden in a 3F sub-district. Name an address for the record, please.
Patrick Mahoney of Adams &amp; Maranty with a business address of 350 West Broadway. The proposed building is, as it stands, is an existing four-family building, and with each of the bedrooms are one-bedroom units, and the proposal consists of adding a floor still 10 feet below the proposed, the allowed building height, but because it is a non-conforming use, and it is an extension of more than 25 percent, we were cited as a variance standard as MFR being not allowed. The, in essence, the first floor will stay the same. I did just hand some flyers out, or excuse me, the summary of the plans, and the top floor will become two two-bedrooms, having living space on the first floor, kitchen and living room space, and then two bedrooms above.
What are the drawings of the...
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions on the board? Anyone to speak in favor of the project?
Anyone who speaks in favor of the project?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, on behalf of Dave Cotter, we'd like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Sean Cheatham, Councilor Andrea Campbell's office, we'd also like to go on record in support.
Anyone here to speak in opposition? Pleasure to the board.
Much for approval of continued BPDA design review.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They're all set.
Thank you.
Calling BOA six-eight-five-zero-three-zero, fifty-one Wilson Street. This is to erect a three-unit residential dwelling with three off-street parking. The violation is Article sixty, Section forty-point-one, conformity with the existing building alignment. Article sixty, Section nine, lot area is insufficient. Article sixty, additional lot area is insufficient. Article sixty, lot frontage is insufficient. Article sixty, lot width is insufficient. Article sixty, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty, Section nine, the building height is excessive. Article sixty, Section nine, usable open space is insufficient. Article sixty, Section nine, side yard is insufficient. And Article sixty, Section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Stuart Schreier, one-zero-zero-five Dorchester Avenue in Dorchester. With me is Cy Voe, who's the owner of the property. Go ahead, you- So, Mr. Voe has already built three new houses on the corner of Wilson Street and Verrill Street. These were infill where houses had been and houses were torn down. It's been quite a change for the street because a lot of the houses were in need of repair. His stepping in and building already three new houses in that area have spurred a lot of other people to step up and fix their homes up. He's building a traditional three-decker. It's just a reproduction of the three-deckers that were there before. And again, he built one at fifty, sixty-one Wilson, he built one at thirty-nine Wilson, and he built one at sixteen-
All the same design?
Verrill. The colors change, and some of the fit and finish change, but the designs are a traditional three-decker. With front and back porches, with ramps as necessary. He's doing-
Are they in rentals or sales?
They're rentals. And he's in the neighborhood, and the people are happy that he manages his property very carefully. He's actively involved in the day-to-day management. These are twelve-hundred-and-fifty gross square feet. The apartments are just under twelve-hundred net square feet. They're three-bedroom apartments, they're suitable for rentals in the neighborhood, they're family-oriented. I hear a lot sitting here today of fifty and a hundred studio apartments. Studios are necessary for people starting out, single people, but there's not sufficient apartments for families. And this is what this is, this is family housing. So, if you have any questions-
Mr. Schreier, have you seen the BRA recommendation?
I have not. He certainly will conform with the building alignment. We do know that the violations exist. Oh, just talking about building alignment, I don't know how that became an issue. He's built three other houses, and he's conformed with the building alignment.
You want to speak to the context?
Yeah, you know, it was one of those things where we were, the planner for Dorchester wants everything to be lined up now. I know our recommendation is to know without prejudice, but that's something that we can work with through design review, so I'm not really holding a hard line on this recommendation.
Drawings are adequate.
Is anyone here to speak in favor of the project?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, it's George from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. There was a community process, and it was accepted amongst the neighborhood. In addition, the property owner owns other property in the neighborhood, and the abutters of those streets also have applauded his work that he's done in keeping the fabric of the neighborhood and having these developments look like what's already in the neighborhood. In addition, in going out of his way to clean up during snow removal and just helping out throughout the neighborhood, we would like to go on record in support.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Walter F. White, District Five, City Council, Tim McCarthy's office. We'd also like to go on record and support.
Is anyone here to speak in opposition? Any questions on the board?
Much for approval of BRA design review.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Calling BOA six-nine-one-nine-zero-seven-forty-seven Fowler Street. This is off-street parking for one residential vehicle. The violation is Article ten, Section one, proposed parking is within five feet of the side yard lot line. Article sixty, Section nine, usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, good morning, Madam Chairman and Members of the Board. My name is Shirley A. Jones.
Can you tell us what you're proposing?
I'm proposing to complete the driveway. I got the approval, and I wasn't under the understanding that I had to do it immediately at that time. The curve cut has been done.
Okay, so the curve cut, that you're requesting approval has already been-
Yes, and I've had prior approval already. I have those documents with me for prior approval.
It looks like your approval was in two thousand.
Yes.
And so you've waited until now to complete the project?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay, so you're coming to us because that approval expired, and you're looking about the same, the approval for the same-
Yes. And I wanted to make sure that I updated it and have everything correct.
How are the drawings, Mr. Zani?
Ah, there, I'm confused. Because, in essence, it becomes front yard parking. And the question really is, what was really approved? I can't believe that we approved front yard parking because, two reasons. Number one, it's for only one car. Generally, not granted for a parking for one vehicle. So, do you have a copy of what was originally approved?
I do.
We have it, yeah. We have it, sometimes.
And if I can say so, please, the parking will not be in the front yard. There will be sufficient space so the car can be moved down. It won't be near the curve cut, it won't be near the sidewalk at all.
Is this a one or a two-family?
It's a three-family.
It's a three-family drawing?
Yes.
And this is the only parking on site?
Yes.
How many cars are parked there now?
None.
But the driveway curve cuts are in?
Yes.
So why are there no cars parked there?
Because I didn't put the asphalt down.
Oh.
And again, I just wanted to make sure I was doing it right.
But, again, you know, it's clear that we approved something in two thousand.
So this is parking that is red-bricked, that's right by the front stairs? We just want to make sure, our red mulch, that we are looking at the right building?
You're looking in the right building, forty-seven Fowler Street? But I have enough space to move the car down, there's adequate space there. So it won't be near the door, it won't be near the sidewalk, it won't be near the curve cut. There's sufficient space there.
On the left side of the house, if we're looking at the house, are you looking at the left side or the right side?
The right side.
By the side of the house?
What kind of car is it, man?
It's a truck.
It's an Acura.
I know, but it's a very small lot, is my point, and how you fit the vehicle in there unless you're on the sidewalk.
No, it won't be on the sidewalk. What I did do, I had someone to go out and do the measurements. The company that I wanted to hire, that I would like to hire to do it, so they went out and did the measurements. I have that with me.
So I'm just curious, how did this come to IFC's attention and-
Oh, because I brought it back to their attention because I finally wanted to put the asphalt down. And again, I just wanted to make sure that I was doing the right thing and following the rules.
Bob, have you had a chance to look at the plans?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Bob D'Amico, BTD. There is parking on this side, so if you give one car to this application, you're basically making it private parking, and there's no room for more than one space. And it's also find-out parking. So based on our past policy, I have to be opposed to this request.
So, the front yard drawing that was submitted, it is, it's not front yard parking, it's to the side, but you're right, it's only one car because it's a bow window that comes out that would block any additional space. But it's only one car, which means you eliminated one space on the street and you've placed it on one space.
I can't speak with the curve cut, I have no idea how it went there. But according to the plans that I saw, it would never fit our criteria.
Well, we're in somewhat a conundrum here because clearly we approved something in two thousand.
Well, it's fifteen years expired, so, and policies and thought processes have changed in the meantime.
When was the curve cut actually put in?
DPW two thousand. When I got permission, I got the permit.
They put it to the photograph that the law-
Yeah. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the proposal?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Sean Cheatham, Councilor Andrea Campbell's office, we'd like to go on record in support.
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? What's the pleasure of the board?
I want to make a motion for its approval since we already granted relief at that point. The appellant's testimony is that the curve cut was put in in a timely fashion. I don't understand why we didn't just start parking at that point.
Second, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I'm opposed.
I'm opposed.
There's most appearance.
Calling BOA six-nine-three-nine-four-nine, seventeen eighty-five Columbus Avenue. This is to combine three parcels, is Columbus Avenue here?
Yes.
Okay. This is to combine three parcels into one site with the address of seventeen eighty-five Columbus Ave. Ninety Amory, eighteen thirty-seven Columbus, seventeen eighty-five Columbus, and erect a new two-hundred-and-six-thousand-five-hundred-square-foot building with a hundred-and-thirty-nine-two-thousand, a hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-two-hundred square feet, takeout restaurant and office, sixty-seven-thousand-three-hundred square foot parking. Building's floor seven-plus, one basement level, and two levels of parking with a hundred-and-fifty-seven spaces. Community uses of daycare, center, takeout restaurant, and office. The building height will be an average of ninety-five feet. Violation of Article fifty-five, Section twenty-two, takeout restaurant is conditional use. Article fifty-five, Section twenty-three, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article fifty-five, Section twenty-three, height is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Lee Goodman, seventeen oh-five Columbus Ave.
Kate Baran, seventeen oh-five Columbus Ave.
D'Artagnan Brown, architect from Embark Studio.
Jeff Goodman, seventeen oh-five Columbus Ave.
Describe it broadly, please.
Sure. Good morning, so my name is Lee Goodman and my dad, Jeff Goodman, we're Watermark Development. And this is a joint venture with Horizons for Homeless Children, represented by Kate Baran. We're currently the landlord next door to Horizons as our tenant, and they're expanding with us into the site next door. So it's a great project, it's a social service-centered building, so it's all going to be either nonprofit or like Department of Children and Family-type uses in the structure. We've had a long, long community support period, unanimous support throughout. There's also going to be a cafe at the corner of Dimick and Amory Street that the BRA asked us to implement, and that's going to be run by a local business group that runs Chillicothe Days in Jamaica Plain. I'm actually going to let Kate talk briefly about Horizons and their mission.
So, Horizons basically is an organization that serves homeless children, so inside of this-
Sorry, excuse me, so, let's talk about the violations. Because there are, I guess, three zoning violations? And I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we do know what the organization does. The project is before us for appealing the violations, so please, can somebody on the team talk about what is required and what you're proposing?
Sure, so the three violations are height, FAR, and a takeout use. The takeout use was for the cafe space at the corner, that the BRA was looking to get some kind of street life involved in that corner of Amory and Dimick. The FAR and the height are just a result of a former industrial area being essentially rezoned through JP Rocks. And we're a little bit in front of that, but we're kind of piggybacking in the spirit of the rezoning. So there's actually going to be allowed uses of these heights and FARs essentially up and down that corridor. So we're just out in front.
Is this currently a parking lot?
It's three parcels, so it's the parking lot. It's the old blue warehouse that was a storage place for economy plumbing and heating, and a motion auto body, a small auto body, who's moving down the street.
What is the height requirement, and what is-
So currently, the height requirement's thirty-five feet because it's an IDA zone. JP Rocks has rezoned the area and encouraged more density. And so what they've done is encouraged a density bonus for affordable housing. So while this isn't a housing project, it doesn't have that density bonus component, it does fit in, you're going to start to see fourteen-story buildings next door. So we're just kind of right about halfway up.
But JP Rocks, what would they allow?
Well, they would allow anything you want, as long as you're willing to do the density bonus to it, in other words.
But you don't quite fit that.
Exactly, we're all commercial. So this is a straight zoning variance as opposed to a density bonus variance.
And your proposed height is, what, ninety-two feet?
Uh, base of average grade, it's eighty-eight feet, six inches.
So this is-
So your high rise?
Yes.
So it's more than twice what's required from zoning.
Yes, current zoning is IDA, yes.
Is this an Article eighty?
It is.
Large, large or small?
Large project review, it's been through BCDC, supported, support through all the community process, ONS, BRA process. It's had strong support from all the abutters on record.
And the BPDA, I'm looking for the, what was the opinion that you render?
Right, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, Jeff Hampton, Deputy Director for Zoning. I want to make the record clear, although this plan, the BPDA is in strong support of this project, I'd like to make the record clear that no zoning changes have been done to this area that have been incorporated into Article fifty-five. It does meet the spirit and the guidelines of the plan. However, no zoning changes have been done as of yet to Article fifty-five. So I don't want anyone in the audience or on the board to be confused about bonus densities because it hasn't been incorporated yet. We haven't written it yet, so the zoning that is before you now is the zoning that is still in place. It does meet the spirit of the plan, but again, no amendments have been done to Article fifty-five to reflect that.
Was the last hearing or the hearing before we approved the project on Amory Street at the corner of, basically, Columbus and, Columbus and-
Yes.
Center Street, but it had an Amory Street address. Do you remember what the height of that was?
No.
I don't think it was this high.
I don't think it was this high either.
Yeah, I'm not- Clearly, the project has been thoroughly vetted in terms of going through the BPDA, Article eighty, large project, and BCDC. But the question comes about is, where's the height where we should really place?
Because it's there.
Because why, since the Roxy, the JP Rocks is, to get to ninety feet, you'd have to move back and up a lot or something.
Right.
So I just mentioned quickly that the reason the height appears so high is it's being measured from the average grade, so-
All right, I understand exactly what you're mentioning.
No, just there's a-
If I could jump in, just to mention, Anthony, from Columbus down to Amory, there's a fifteen-foot grade drop. So part of our parking, two levels of our parking essentially tucked into the hill, and we've worked with the BPDA to do major stepbacks and setbacks along Dimick. Currently, there's a five-foot sidewalk, we worked together a twelve-foot sidewalk. We pushed the building back an additional twenty-five feet on the Dimick side to open up the air for both, for the pedestrian access along Dimick, in addition to playgrounds for the children.
But what is the setback on Columbus?
The setback on Columbus, let me just grab the drawings.
Sidewalk's being expanded four feet.
Yeah, the current sidewalk is eight and we're expanding it four feet.
So, you, you run from eight to twelve?
Correct, twelve feet around the whole building.
How, how are the drawings, Mr. President?
Oh, the drawings are excellent.
So, this is essentially creating a new streetscape for this area of Columbus, because as your drawings indicate, the property on the other side is essentially a thirty-five foot, maybe forty-foot height.
You talking about the, the commercial building next door?
I, I, it, I don't know, it looks residential to me, and I know there's a string of them on that side of the street here.
Right.
And then Academy is not, it's what, thirty-five feet, if that?
Yeah, so it's important, it's true, so what happened in, in JP Rocks, although it isn't issued yet?
Right, but we just have to focus on what it is now and what-
Right, what, so what it is, is, is the, there's thirty-five feet row houses, and then the way we designed it was to take the architecture of that brick and bring it across, and then have our building step back to begin the new streetscape as you describe it, and I think the expectation is as we go, they're going to get higher next to us, so we are the first step, but it's trying to, to be a bridge between the two.
Yes, but, but, but what's the benefit? There is no benefit, all you're asking for is just straight plain relief from the zoning.
What's the benefit for the community?
Social services.
Yeah, I think so, one of the, the, because this isn't housing and there isn't affordable housing, is why we wanted to talk a little bit about the uses. It's a school for homeless children, and it's also a social service center, a job center, so you're talking about-
What's the job center?
Let me, let me articulate what we're doing here, so the idea of this building is, we have two-hundred children on our waitlist, we want to serve more children, we have to open more seats, so to do that, we're going to have two-hundred-and-twenty-five homeless children and their families who are using this building. We're going to be bringing in agencies who support our families, so that there's one place that all of these families can go, and they can access what they need in the community, like food stamps, other services, early intervention for their children, so that this becomes a hub for this community where their children's needs are served, and their needs are served as a family in one place.
So, is this in perpetuity, or is this just a use, do you have a, a lease, or is this in any way set in perpetuity, because the building is there regardless of who the tenants are?
No, no, they're the owners.
We will own.
You're going to own the building, so you are the applicants?
Correct. Joint.
Joint applicants, they will own.
Where are these services currently being delivered from?
So, right now, we, in the White Rock building next door, we have a very small center of, of fifty children, we're going to be bringing our other, we have two other centers that operate in Dorchester and Jamaica Plain, they're all going to come together here, so it'll be a job center for teachers, as well as, it'll be our headquarters, and all of our capabilities will be inside this structure, so it'll-
And the entire building is devoted to the mission, the Horizons mission?
The, so, our hope is that the tenants that go into his space will be people who service our clientele, in other words, government agencies in some cases that serve our families, and other providers who serve our families.
And when you say his space, what percentage is yours and what is-
Sixty, forty, so Horizons has the first two full stories, we have the upper four, or three and a half, so we do have commitments from, from Department of Children and Families. To date, we're talking with another large nonprofit, but all the tenants will be of this type, and this is what you see up and down Amory Street, community servings, AIDS Action is here, Ethos, so if you know this area of Amory, it's all large nonprofits right near the Orange Line stations, so we want to continue that use.
So, your, so your hope, your hope is that all the uses will be nonprofit, but what's, what's the commitment to that?
Well, the, the commitment-
I mean, is it, is there something in the deed that restricts it to nonprofit?
It's just that on, on Amory Street, and we do own other properties, that, that's the tenants you see, there is no Reebok, no Fidelity coming to Jackson Square, we're-
But, but you know, it might, and then we just need to know what happens with the relief we grant, you know, because essentially Horizons is limited to two stories, the rest of it could very easily become for-profit, you know, market-grade uses as, as the environment changes, because we are seeing a change, and seeing it changing dramatically.
Yeah, and we're committed to that use, I mean, I don't know how you want us to word it, but we already have letters of intent in place from those type of uses, and continue the discussions with similar uses, that's all we're renting to.
There is no overnight stay at all?
No.
Intended for this building?
No, no.
Yeah, I'm just going to reemphasize that we do have a letter of commitment from the state for one-floor plate for Department of Children and Families, we're in, we're in a conversation with, they're also interested in more space, which we're discussing with them, that would be one and a half stories out of the three and a half that we have, we're meeting tomorrow with another major nonprofit who's having to relocate from Somerville that has youth programs as well.
And we're in conversations with the Department of Transitional Assistance.
No one's questioning, look, the value of this work and the mission, I think that Jared's concerned is that what happened to five years, what happened to ten years, when we grant relief in a variance and the markets change and the potential tenant, you know, unless you are locking people into twenty leases.
Well, the lease, for instance, I mean, the leases are, the lease with the state is ten and ten, so we're twenty years out there, and, and these people also have the responsibility of fitting out their own space, it's a major economic investment, I don't think they do it casually.
If, if this was residential, we would ask how many bedrooms, to get a census to what the population is.
Right.
When you did your occupancy study of the building, what is the maximum occupancy of this building?
Hold on, the number, the, the macum- It's right around, so I'm just looking for the exact number, I think it's right around six hundred, six hundred.
And what is the total number of parking, then, because we have to consider this as a commercial building.
Sure, it's a hundred and fifty-seven.
And if it is a commercial, what would the parking ratio have to be, two per thousand, three per thousand?
Point seven-five, for large project review.
Point, point seven-five ratio?
Point seven-five.
Per thousand feet, yeah.
So, three-quarter car per thousand, right there.
Okay.
Thank you, anyone here to speak in favor of the project?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, on behalf of Alex Valdez, we'd like to go on record in support, this went through a very good community process, and will facilitate the expansion of the homeless facility, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Shannon Murphy from Councilor Matt O'Malley's office, councilor would like to go on record in support of this project.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, on behalf of City Council at Lodge, Michael Flaherty, councilor would go on record in support.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Minor Perez, representing the Carpenters Union, would like to go on record in support of this project.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Royce, I'm at nineteen Olmsted Street, I'm here speaking personally on the project, I attended all the public meetings about the project, and I also have been very involved with Plan JP Rocks, and I appreciate the questions from the board in that regard, even though Plan JP Rocks is not encoded in zoning, and it does represent the community standards, I think, for how to change industrial lots, how to change the use height and density of the industrial lots, of which this is a really good example, so I wanted to just say a couple of things, the height, the, the height that's designated for this in Plan JP Rocks is seventy feet, so they have exceeded that height, I can still support the project despite that, because that frontage, the place where it's the highest is on Columbus Ave., which is very, very wide, and has a median strip, three lanes in each direction, also is very important that, that to, to me, that they acknowledged a, a goal of wider sidewalks for better pedestrian experience, all these lots involve demolition and new build, there's no reason those buildings can't go back twelve feet to give a better pedestrian experience, and they did that on this project, and they did it on Dimick Street, where it will make a very big difference, that's a very narrow street. The other thing is that they honored the JP Rocks guideline, which is when you're, the budding apartment buildings, which you correctly said were three stories high, that those belong to Urban Edge, Plan JP Rocks guidelines call for a step back when you're, when you're next to three-story buildings, and they did that on Dimick Street, so I do appreciate that. The place where they don't meet the stepbacks and setbacks is on Amory Street, they don't have as much step back and, they, they don't have as much step back as would be required, Amory Street is a little narrower street, and across the street is a street, is a three-story building, I just ask if they could, if, if you could ask for, when BPDA does their design review, that they would please look at that again, those are BPDA guidelines, so if they could just give that another little emphasis, but happy that Horizons for Homeless has a, a home for themselves for the long term, and personally like the office use and nonprofit, thank you.
Anyone here to speak in opposition? Any other questions, any other questions to the board?
I still am hung up on this idea that the zoning requirement is thirty-five feet, JP Rocks is, is, the guidelines are proposing seventy feet, and you're coming in at eighteen feet above those guidelines already, and so, there's, it seems to me that you're kind of reaching a little bit.
I would only note that, I know JP Rocks isn't built yet, but I think if you look closer at what JP Rocks is proposing, it's actually fourteen stories adjacent to our site, and the reason they did seventy feet was because they expected six-story podium apartment buildings, this is a use that no one really expected here, because they, all you're seeing in Jamaica Plain right now is these massive residential six-story podium projects, we don't think that's a good use for this site, because this allows something different, it's a job center, it's the expansion of Horizons for Homeless, and we needed that to create the parking to make the building function, there's two stories of parking set into the hill, and since the hill grade changes, it makes it, it bumps the height up into that number you're talking about, but again, it's just a function of the use of the building.
I have a follow-up question, Jim, how much open space, how much space is available after Horizons and, and, and youth and family, how much open space is left there?
To rent, to date, fifty thousand? And so, one other thing, sorry, I thought you were talking about open space, I would only note that all those stepbacks and all the area on top of the parking, those are all playgrounds for the school, I know it doesn't much matter, but the design is just implemented to create a school function.
And I have one more question, or may, might not be my only question, but I have another question, do you foresee any time in the future where your, where Horizons would grow and rent some space in this building?
Conceivably, yes, because we, there may be extensions to our program.
Regarding the conditional use you're seeking for restaurant and takeout, you don't have a tenant for that right now, right?
We, we do have a tenant, so it's, it's, I don't know if anyone's from Jamaica Plain, but Chilicote's, they have two Mexican restaurants in Jamaica Plain, and they're willing to expand into this space as the third, he actually grew up a block away, so I know him my whole life, but he's, it's not going to be a third Chilicote's, it's a similar use, but he's a local guy with another restaurant on this street, and the BRA was adamant that there be some kind of street life on this corner at night.
I think the question is, we don't grant takeout unless there's-
Yeah, it's, it's a specific use tied to a specific restaurateur.
Okay, any other questions? Let's pleasure the board.
Can I make a motion to approve with continued BPDA design review, and just special attention, and Jeff, I don't know if we can do this, can we, I guess it's really not enforceable to say that, you know, we can make the tenants, you know, we want to, we want to hold your feet to the fire, basically, that you guys continue to put-
Well, I will.
Yeah, that you guys-
I, I will hold his feet to the fire on that one, too.
Yeah, because, because I think that the spirit of the, the building is awesome, I think that the design is awesome, from my, from my perspective, I, I think that we need that there, but I just definitely, we don't want to see, you know, you guys have a great reputation, we don't want to see anything where, or I don't want to see anything, I'll speak for myself, where we believe that you guys are doing something and then something else changes, so I'm, I'm in favor of that.
I, I'd like to second the overall approval, but add a proviso that as part of BPDA's design review, that they take a very hard look at setbacks on the other streets, and matter of fact, I think we want to make that a condition of approval, that there has to be a setback on the other street.
A step back on, on, on upper floor, is that what you mean?
Well, above the second floor, and, and-
I'll take that as an amendment.
Okay, so the motion's been made with an amendment, seconded, all of a favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling BOA six seven four, six three eight, one sixty-two to one seventy-two South Street. This is the change argument from a store to a floating spa, interior renovation for tenant fit out to include interior petitions and finishes, violation to Article fifty-five, section eight, a floating spa is forbidding use, Article nine, section two, changing and non-conforming use, name and address for the record, please.
Michael Bullock, one sixty-two, one seventy-two, Minster, Jamaica Plain.
Do you think, describe the project, when you're looking for-
It's an existing building divided into five different retail spaces.
Can you move that over a little bit, we're speaking, so thank you.
Five different retail spaces, this space was a convenience store, it-
I guess we're having trouble hearing it, go ahead.
The huddle?
Yes, take off your hat, we'd like to see your face.
So, we change, it's an empty space right now, it's approximately eleven hundred square feet, and we want to create petitions for rooms for a floating spa retail type of space.
Okay, so this is a change in non-conforming use, right?
Non-conforming use, so-
That's why you're here.
Yes.
Mr. Pazzani, how are the plans?
Dr. Andrew, what exactly is a floating spa?
Well, I have these-
Yeah, these brochures, I'll give you right now.
It's a, it's a tub that you can close yourself in, about ten inches of Epsom salt water, and you float.
So, basically, floating, the float, the float spa is going to have these float pods, which contain ten inches deep of water, a thousand pounds of Epsom salt, the salt contains magnesium, is healing for the body, and then with the sensory deprivation, you're basically, you know, you're depriving yourself of, you know, your senses, which gives you great stress relief, and triggers your body's innate ability to heal, so, yeah.
So, salt can float in ten inches of water?
Yeah, because there's so much salt, a thousand pounds of Epsom salt, you float effortlessly, so, yeah, so it's very safe.
Noise? I've heard of this before, I'm just curious.
Uh, well, actually, the good thing about, in regards to noise, is that the, the whole spa is surrounded by, you know, it's based on being, you know, as quiet as possible, because we want people to have a good experience, so there's actually a lot of soundproofing that's going to go into the construction, so it's, you know, very quiet.
Hold on, the BPD had me in on that floating.
Coffee in the coffee. I, I, I have one question, how do you deal with accessibility?
Accessibility? Well, I believe there's going to be handrails, right?
No, there's, there's an accessible, that doesn't show it in that brochure, but there is an accessible tub.
I, I, I'm looking at the entrance in, and your entrance is not accessible, I mean, there's a small bit of vestibule, but it's, you know, does not have sufficient dimension for someone in a wheelchair to even get in there.
So, that, that's existing in the building now, we weren't changing that part of the-
Right, but you're doing a major renovation to the building, you're required to bring up to standard, I'm sure ISB should pick that up, or they should build a permit, but just something that you can mind.
Okay.
Okay, is there anyone else speaking in favor of the project?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, on behalf of Alex Valdez, we'd like to go on record in support, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Shannon Murphy from Councilor Matt O'Malley's office, the council would like to go on record in support of this project.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, on behalf of City Council at Lodge, Michael Flaherty, council would go on record in support.
and Michael Flaherty, council to go on record in support.
Anyone here to speak in opposition? Let's pleasure the board. Second. Is there any serious grates, anything on the outside?
No, just changing the existing side.
No need for, all of favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Going to the, going to the ten-thirty hearings?
Only two hours.
Calling BOA six six five three zero seven, fifteen H Mount Vernon Street. This is adding a covered deck to the second-floor unit. Violations Article sixty-five, Section nine, side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kelly Kennedy, I live at fifteen and a half, Mount Vernon Street.
Okay, briefly describe what your proposal is.
Yes, so I'm just looking basically to restore a deck that was already there. This is a triple-decker in Dorchester. The other residents aren't interested, I'm on the second floor, so it'll just be a covered deck in the same size it was before.
Did the original have the cover?
No, well, no, but it was a triple-decker, so, yes.
How the drawings are done?
The drawings are adequate.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the project?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we'd like to go on record in strong support. We did hold an onsite abutters meeting, and there were no objections. This will be consistent with the rest of the street. Thank you.
Is there anyone here in opposition? Let's pleasure the board.
Marching for approval of BPDA design review.
All of favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, you're all done.
Calling BOA six eight four two seven five one oh two to one oh two H Street. This is an installation of a new thirteen-by-twenty-four roof deck, and installs spiral stairs from the existing rear deck to a new deck. Violation to Article sixty-eight, Section eight, the rear yard setback is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
My name's Henry Miller, I'm a registered architect here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and I'm joined by Chris Travato, who is the owner of one oh two H Street, second floor. It's an owner-occupied unit, they live on the second floor. We are here to seek relief from Article sixty-eight, Section eight, regarding the rear yard setback. The deck itself that we're building is in compliance with the setbacks, however, there's an existing stair out in the backyard, which is a non-conforming structure. The building itself is also non-conforming, it's only ten feet from the property line. There's an existing deck off the back of the building, and an existing stair to access that deck, which we would like to build on top of, so we're not making the setback any, we're not coming any closer to the rear yard setback, but we'd like to build on top of the existing spiral stair with another spiral stair identical to the one below, so that we can then access the deck.
How the drawings are done?
Director, do you have a clear elevation of that?
I can hand you, I'm not sure, these are smaller versions of what you have, you should, I believe there's one on sheets. I also have, actually, which might help you, I have some street elevations in this packet here, which indicate the deck, and how it would be viewed from the street.
That's right.
Okay, there are eight copies of that.
All right, in the meantime, while we're doing that, is there anyone here to speak in favor of the project? Is there anyone here in opposition?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we would like to go in opposition to this project. It is within Article sixty-eight, which is the new zoning district, and we've taken a position of not supporting any variances to Article sixty-eight. Additionally, I have heard from a few abutters who are in opposition. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Lauren Miller, City Councilor Phil Linehan's office, we too wish to go on record in opposition. Thanks.
Chris Pizzani, any insights, having seen the elevation?
Yeah, the issue is simply whether or not, with a brand-new zoning, whether variances should be granted. What can you, you can do, Dex, as a right, what can you do as a right?
As of right, you can build within the contact, or the confines of the house itself, so you could go up within the house itself.
The footprint, yeah.
Yeah, and for, the house in question was built in eighteen ninety, and it just won't allow for that kind of access, we simply don't have.
So this deck can lever it out over the?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
And the reason we had to cantilever it out is to restrict the access to the deck to one unit only, and your unit is not the top floor, is that right?
But now his unit is the top floor.
Okay, so why can't you just go up with a hatch directly to the deck?
There's, the way the house is structured and framed on the top floor has got two-by-sevens, which are nominal, or actual two-by-sevens.
Yeah, but I know, all we're talking about is a moving of money.
Well, I guess, I mean, the problem is, is that it's a family, they only have two bedrooms in the back, so there's really no area for them to put this interior stair. We'd need a five-foot diameter spiral stair to go up through to the roof. There just isn't, we don't have the real estate in there to do it. And our hope was that because there's an existing non-conforming condition, that we're not making worse, we're just simply building on top of, and the deck itself is compliant, it's only the stair itself, and then the cantilever that leads from the deck. And the hope was that, the reason I had that cantilever, the reason we put that there, was to keep the piece that was non-conforming as minimal as possible.
What pleasure the board?
And there's no way from, you don't have a rear deck.
There is a rear deck.
Okay, so there's a way from the rear deck you can get?
Yeah, that's what the stair does, it goes, there's a rear deck that exists now, it's also non-conforming, and there's a stair that accesses that rear deck. We're building on top of that stair to go from that deck to the roof. And again, our stair would not be any larger than the existing stair, it would be the same size.
No, no, I mean, we're very familiar with that.
Is there a design solution that would not, that would be as of right?
Again, the only thing we could do as of right is if we built within the house, we simply don't have the space to do it, and it would require a fair amount of structural stuff. Again, the house was built in eighteen ninety, so the joists up there are small enough as it is.
Okay, is there a motion for the board?
Yeah, I reluctantly, I'm going to make a motion for denial of prejudice. I think the project, on the face, is a very good project, but the notion of immediately violating the new zoning regulation, I just have a hard time doing that.
Second.
Which means that you can rework and come right back.
Okay.
All of favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you. Calling BOA six nine seven zero seven eight, eleven Fayette Street. This is the correct violation for permits, a new rear portico has been built and the rear entrance exit on the first-floor level without a permit or inspection, along with the installation of a fence in the rear yard of six feet, over, over six feet tall. Change argument from a single-family to a two-family. The violations, Article thirty-two, Section nine, the G-Cod enforcement, Article sixty-three, Section eight, rear yard is insufficient, Article sixty-three, usable open space is insufficient, and Article sixty-three, Section nine, the density limitation regulations. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Secretary, members of the board, Attorney Nick Cizula, McDermott, Quintian Miller, twenty-eighth State Street here in Boston. With me today are the property owners, Frank Moore to my immediate right, and Gustavo Deho Suarez to my far right. We're here before you today for conversion to a single-family to a two-family, basically to legalize a longstanding actual occupancy of the building, and to properly permit a rear portico that was mistakenly built at the rear entrance exit on the first-floor level without a permit. The rear portico triggered zoning relief required for rear yard insufficient and groundwater review. By way of a little bit of background, the family has owned this property and this building for over twenty years. It's been inhabited as a two-family ever since they've, before they purchased it. For some reason, the occupancy was never legalized, despite various efforts to do so over the past few decades. We're here, basically, to obtain approval for the two-family. The city assessing department, for what it's worth, has had the property listed as a two-family since two thousand and five, for over a decade. So it's a, it's a, it's a very narrow lot, it's only a thousand square feet, majority of the property is covered by the existing building. The lot is only thirteen and a half feet or so at the rear of the property, sixteen and a half feet at the front, and the violations are basically kind of bifurcated, and that two of them are due to the zoning, the legalizing of the two-family, the usable open space, because we are technically adding a unit per the zoning code, as well as the density regulations. And the rear portico triggered the G-Cod enforcement, as well as the rear yard violation. So a majority of these are due to existing conditions at the property, and that we are just legalizing today.
Let's deal with the G-Cod issue first, and then we can get back to the question.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Christian Semenelli, Groundwater Trust. I've had some conversations with the applicant over the past couple of weeks, they were looking for some additional clarification on the G-Cod, on the G-Cod trigger. ISD has provided them with that. However, they have yet to submit plans to water and sewer, so at this time, I do support a whole-fish signature. The applicant has committed to installing a recharge system, but the plans have not yet been submitted to water and sewer for approval.
If not?
They have not been, but the applicant has committed to a system.
Okay, well.
Is there a reason why?
This office was brought on board about ten days ago, the applicant just did not understand the requirement, and that's the reasoning. We've provided a letter today to the board for the file, from the civil engineer who has been hired, who is on board, and does have plans in the works for the recharge system. But frankly, the applicant just wasn't aware of the requirement at the time, hence, the last ten days, we've done as much work as we possibly can, and we appreciate Christian's patience and all the frantic calls that we've made, but we are working on it.
And my office did have some back and forth with inspectional services and the applicant. There was a, just a miscommunication between ISD and the applicant.
The question that I started asking, what are the actual square footages of the two units?
What are the square footages of the two units?
Twelve thirty-four, the one unit.
The, yeah, the lower unit is twelve thirty-four duplex, and the upper unit?
Eight. Three?
Yeah. Is it bigger, smaller, or bigger? Larger, larger. It's around sixteen hundred.
Christian, in your experience, how long will it take to get a better stamp?
An approved plan from water and sewer. Typically with their workload, it can take anywhere from two to four weeks, depending on where they are with their caseload, so somewhere in that timeframe.
Because the question is, how do we simply sit on this for two to four weeks? In effect, we should simply defer, so that your plan catches up with it.
If I may, Mr. Pizzani, the next hearing is not for three weeks, there is not a two-week hearing, it's not for three weeks, with the plans already being worked on, I don't, I don't see why we would not be able to have that done by the next hearing. The reason why we strongly urge not to be granted a deferral is just because that will cost two to three months of time that I just don't think we need, I mean.
But in all fairness, I mean, this has been in this state for decades.
No, the rear portico, the trigger for G-Cod is the rear portico, which was only installed, was only been installed recently.
Look, we understand, it ain't convenient to you, but you can't ask the board to not follow proper protocol, because it's convenient to you.
I understand.
Say that as delicately as possible.
No, no, I completely understand, and that was not my suggestion. What I was, what I would just say for clarification is, the rear portico is what's triggering G-Cod, and that has not been in, at this building for more than a few months.
Right, no, we don't, we don't have a definitive answer from water and sewer.
Not yet, no, I mean, no plans, no plans have been submitted.
The applicant has?
I'm going to make a motion for deferral, so that everything catches up when we do it all at once.
Second. All of favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, all right.
We're looking at the date, you're gonna?
Can we do it soon?
Well, we can do it soon, we can try to fit him into the June twenty-seventh meeting.
You won't be ready by June twenty-seventh, will you?
That's some, I mean, we were just told that it takes anywhere from two to four weeks.
That's up to water and sewer. If the plans are submitted this week, I should have something by the twenty-seventh, yes.
So we wouldn't meet again until July eleventh, we're not meeting the first week of July.
Okay, and that's where it'll have to be?
July eleventh.
Do it July eleventh.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Calling a next case, calling BOA six eight seven four three five, twenty-two to forty, Chauncey Street. This is a change of argument from a business office to trade professional school for the Boston Academy of English, as an existing tenant located on the eighth floor of thirty-eight Chauncey Street. No work to be done. Violation to Article eight, Section seven, the trade professional school is a conditional in a, in a, name and address for the record, please.
Richard Ryan, Beacon Architectural Associates, here to represent the client, who was a tenant at thirty-eight Chauncey Street, on the eighth floor. They are Stafford House International, who run the Boston Academy of English. They had a fit out back in two thousand and twelve, under that permit. The occupancy was listed as business, we're now looking to revise that occupancy to correct it to a trade or professional school.
Okay, so there's nothing, but there's no change?
No change, no work being done, right.
Nonetheless, that was with Pizzani, but the drawing?
Why, fine.
Okay. Is there anyone here who wants to speak in favor of approval?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we'd like to go on record in support, on behalf of Danny Chang.
Anybody here to speak in opposition? Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second. All of favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you. Calling BOA six nine two zero six zero, one Merrimack Street. This is an extension of a conditional use permit for the commercial parking lot, consisting of sixteen licensed parking spaces on one Merrimack Street. The zoning board of APL's decision, signed on March tenth, two thousand and fifteen, granted an extension of a previous conditional use permit of the site for two years, expiring March first, two thousand and seventeen. No work will be performed with this permit. Violation to Article fourteen, Section, Article forty-five, Section fourteen, parking lot is a conditional use, and Article six, Section six dash three A, additional condition in restricted parking district. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Jonathan Burke, an attorney with a business address at fifty Milk Street in Boston. We're just here seeking a continuation essentially of a variance that was issued two years ago by this board for parking on the property. There's no changes to be done. It's the same operator who's operating the spaces, and there's no work or changes to the space. The retail use is continuing to be used as the same coffee shop and ATM, and sixteen parking spaces will be used on the lot as well.
How the drawings are done?
Director.
Is there any issues in screening of the project?
I guess the BRA approval of four thirty fifty, there's no indication of screening on block nine.
Okay, is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the project?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, on behalf of Maria Lanza, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Anyone here to speak in opposition? Is there a motion?
Can I just make a comment? Sure. So, this is like the third time today we've seen this, where the permit has expired. Can you make an effort to get?
We filed February second with ISD. This is the first hearing date I could get.
Should I ask the question? I apologize, thank you.
Thank you.
Then you can make a motion.
I will make a motion to extend.
Two years.
For two years.
Two, two years. Second. All of favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Calling BOA six nine three three four three, nineteen to twenty-one, Short Street. This is to build a new deck using two-by-twelve BT loaded on a triple-two-by-twelve beam deck, it'll be set on a six-by-six post. Violation to Article sixty-two, Section eight, insufficient rear yard setback. Name and address for the record, please.
Christopher Sacco, nineteen, Short Street, Charlestown, Mass., oh-two-one-two-nine. So the project, the situation is, I contracted a contractor to extend my existing deck in the rear of my building. This was in May of two thousand and sixteen. We awaited final sign-off or final sign-off from the building inspector. I kept getting the runaround from my contractor until, all the way through the fall, saying it was coming, it was coming. He then disappeared through the holidays, got back in touch with me, saying it's coming after the first of the year, and again disappeared for over two months. I went down to ten-ten Mass Ave in February of this year to find out he had initially pulled a short form permit, the incorrect permit, because he was, we were extending the deck, not replacing an existing structure. At that time, I just wanted to do whatever was right, and had in a butters meeting, unopposed, found out that the long form that he did submit with plans was denied due to the setback violation that I'm seeking a variance for now.
Okay, so, this is now built?
This is built and has been for a year.
Okay, and when was the indication that there was a setback problem?
The first I heard of it was February of this year. The denial letter actually expired.
So, many months after it was built?
Yes, it's six to seven months after it was built.
And what's the required, and when would it, has it been built, too?
So, the required setback is fifteen feet from the rear property. The deck actually runs away from the property line, so at the closest point, it's, at the closest point to the setback property is eleven feet, six inches. It is in, it is in compliance within two feet of the deck, because the property line and the deck run away.
At that point, it's three and a half feet long, right?
Correct, at the closest point, and then within two feet, it gets to fifteen feet.
Now, the drawings?
The drawings reflect exactly that. Now, this is in Charlestown, right?
Yes, sir. I do have letters of support from...
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the project?
Good afternoon, members of Board of Appeals. Salvatore Lomatino, City Council Representative in Charlestown. I want to go on record in support. As Mr. Sacco said, it's been a long process for him with his contractor. He has full support from his neighbors and the Butters. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, on behalf of Chris Breen, we'd like to go on record in support. This project has been through the community process. Our office did hold an onsite Butters meeting, at which a few neighbors attended. There was no opposition. Additionally, our office has not received any opposition to this project for that reason, as well as our view that the scope of the project is not large. It's appropriate for the surrounding neighborhood, and it will not adversely affect those around the property. We would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second. All in favor? All opposed?
Thank you.
Calling BOA five seven five six two five, thirty-one A to thirty-one Lexington Street. This is a change of occupancy from six to seven units previously approved by the zoning board. The work is to add a third floor to the present building, new kitchen, bathrooms. Violation's Article fifty-two, Section eight, forbidden use of multi-family dwelling. Article fifty-three, Section nine, exceeds the floor-to-air ratio of point eight. Article fifty-three, Section nine, exceeds the number of stories of two and a half. Article fifty-three, Section nine, insufficient sideyard setback, five feet. Article fifty-three, Section nine, insufficient raya setback of thirty feet. Article fifty-three, Section fifty-two, no roof structure shall be erected on the existing building. Article fifty-three, Section fifty-six, insufficient off-street parking, one point five. And Article fifty-three, Section fifty-six, insufficient maneuverability areas and inappropriate means of a vehicle access to the street. Council, I just got a quick question. Was this permit originally back in two thousand and five?
Two thousand and four.
And due to financial reasons, we...
This is a through lock, right? It's a through lock?
This is a full lock, yep. It's a unique lot.
I vaguely remember...
Yeah. Jeff Drago, attorney for the applicant with Drago in Tuscano, fifteen Broad Street. Here with my client, Al Morano, who is the owner of thirty-one A dash thirty-one Lexington Street. As was mentioned, we're here seeking zoning relief to add a third-story penthouse unit, which Mr. Morano is looking to move back to East Boston and live in the building. It was mentioned back in two thousand and four. This was approved by the board. The permits expired due to financial reasons, and Mr. Morano is back, seeking to build that unit for himself. Most of the violations on the building are pre-existing. It isn't a two-family district, so it's a multi-family building being pre-existing. The FAR will increase slightly from point eight to one point oh-five. Obviously, the stories in height go from two and a half to three. The side yard and rear yard both are pre-existing violations. Roof structure restriction is triggered by the third story, and the parking, as was mentioned, is for ten sports. That has been pre-existing. That parking has been there since the building was built. We worked diligently with the Eagle Hill Civic Association this time around to make a number of changes, more of a historic look to the building with a mansard roof and new clapboard on the sidings and shutters along the windows. The current unit would be, the proposed unit would be a two-bedroom, two-bath, fourteen-hundred-and-eighty-eight square-foot penthouse unit, as was mentioned. All of the other units are pre-existing.
Is this proposal virtually the same as the one that was permitted prior?
It's the exact same one.
Slight modifications on the exterior?
Just on the exterior.
And what were their providers with that review?
Just, no, just BPDA, Design Review.
Design Review.
How are the drawings, Mr. Pizzani?
Right, your effort.
Is there anyone here who wants to speak in favor of the proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Claudia Correa from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to go on record in strong support of this application. There was no opposition during the Butters meeting. Also, they changed the design of her time per the Eagle Hill Civic Association, which also have requested that they provide some type of landscaping. They voted in strong support of this application as well.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Salvatore Lomatino, City Council Representative in East Boston. Want to go on record in support. Mr. Morano is a former East Bostonian, and guess what? They all want to come back to East Boston again. So, he wants to come back with his girlfriend and build a nice penthouse over there. So, we're welcoming him back to East Boston. So, I want to go on record in support. Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Let's pleasure the board. Motion to approve with BP, BPL, BPBA? Boston Library Review? Yeah. All right.
That's for screening and buffering of the parking lot and parking lot area.
Second.
So, this is motion to approve with BPDA Design Review of Including Screening and Buffering on the Parking Lot. All in favor? All opposed?
Calling BOA six four nine one zero zero, four ninety-four, Sumner Street. This is confirming legalizing the existing roof structure, roof deck. Violation's Article fifty-three, Section fifty-two, roof structure restrictions. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Robert Piles, four ninety-four, Sumner Street in East Boston. So, thanks very much for taking the time to hear my case this morning. I live in the property with my wife and my two little girls. My wife and I bought the house in two thousand and five. One of the big reasons we fell in love with the house and decided to move into it, even though it was a little bit out of our price range, was it had a roof deck. That was a big determining factor in why we bought the house. We've enjoyed the roof deck since then. We are, you know, very active members of the community, and we also take a lot of pride in being landlords. In fact, this is true, I just got a text from one of my tenants this morning, who said, "Good luck at the meeting. You're a great landlord, and you can tell the board that." We see that... I'm sorry.
We're getting a little punchy up here.
All right, all right. I can show you the text. I have it on my phone. So, a little over a year ago, I received, I was served notice of the violation. I had no idea that it existed, that the violation was existing. You know, we had lived there for over a decade before getting this notice. Since then, it's been about a year and a half that I've been trying to navigate the process of legalizing it. It's been a pretty difficult process.
Can you, so, when you bought the house, the roof deck was there?
Absolutely. It had been there for a number of years, even before we bought the house.
Any idea how many?
My estimate would be five to ten. I think it's a minimum five years.
So, what prompted the notice?
I have absolutely no idea.
Well, Mr. Pizzani, I don't know if I can read into the record here what they have. It says the railing is four foot eight above the roof, and requires a two-foot setback for each foot above the roof.
So that...
And sorry, let us ask you questions.
Sure.
So, is this only for your unit?
It's a common roof deck. It is currently locked. I've had it under lock since getting this notice.
But it comes to all units?
It is a common roof deck to all.
And what's the access to it?
It's a staircase and a hatch.
Okay.
I'm sorry, and just to clarify, it's not a staircase in the back of the building. It's a staircase in the center, internal.
Internal surface.
Yeah.
It looks to be an internal spiral stairs.
That's correct.
Okay, but there's no indication of what prompted?
So, that's the thing. I mean, we have, I've, I don't even have so much as a driving ticket on my record. You know, we have good relationships with all of our neighbors, so to answer your question, I don't know what prompted this violation.
Was this recent construction? Nope.
I mean, we bought the property in two thousand and five, and I believe it had been there at least five years prior.
Mr. Pizzani, how are the drawings?
The drawings fine. It looks as if on one face of the building, eight feet back, and on the other, it would appear to be a good twenty or thirty feet back.
That's right, yeah. It's an eight-foot setback currently from the front of the building. And I actually, just yesterday, had the brilliant idea to print out some pictures, so you guys can see it. This is the view of the front of our building. Oh, I had them over here, okay. Actually, let me give you both of these. So, there's three photos. The first two photos are from the center of Sumner Street, which is a pretty wide street, and you cannot see the roof deck at all.
When it comes to the general test, when we do sidelines, it's from the back of the sidewalk opposite.
So, there is one picture where it is the upper, the very upper portion of the roof deck is visible, and that's exactly where you're, yes, that's the opposite side of Sumner.
Does anyone want to speak in favor of the applicant?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Claudia Correa from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to go on record in support of this application.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Salvatore Lomatino, City Council Representative, want to go on record. I met Mr. Piles, she's like eleven years ago, we first moved into the neighborhood. Beautiful family, and they want to stay in the neighborhood, and he is a good landlord. So, I want to go on record in support. Thank you.
Is anyone here to speak in opposition? Let's pleasure the board.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? You're all set.
Thank you guys very much. I appreciate it.
Calling the next four cases, calling BOA six eight three seven seven one, one to one A Lamson Court. There's also a building code, calling BOA six eight three seven seven zero, one to one A Lamson Court. Third case, BOA six eight three seven eight one, three to five Lamson Court, and BOA six eight three seven eight two, three to five Lamson Court. This is building code. This is for one to one A Lamson Court. This is the combined parcels, lot six hundred and eight point seven five square feet and five hundred and ninety-two point seven five square feet to create Lot Two, of one thousand two hundred and one point five square feet. Erect a new, two-residential-unit townhouse with bay overhang on a public way and a parking garage on the ground floor of Lot Two. The violation's Article fifty-three, Section fifty-seven point two, conformity of an existing building alignment. Article fifty-three, Section fifty-seven point three, traffic visibility across corners. Article fifty-three, Section nine, lot area is insufficient. Article fifty-three, Section nine, additional lot area is insufficient. Article fifty-three, Section nine, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-three, Section nine, the building height is excessive. Article fifty-three, Section nine, usable open space is insufficient. Article fifty-three, Section nine, sideyard is insufficient. And Article fifty-three, Section nine, raya is insufficient. This is the building code for one to one A Lamson. Section eight, eighth edition, seven eighty C M R, Section three two zero two point three point two, windows, balconies, and architectural features and mechanical equipment. This is for three to five Lamson Court. This is to raise the existing structure for three to five Lamson, with seven hundred and fifty square feet, and seven hundred and fifty square feet, and a hundred and fifty-two square foot, a hundred and forty-eight square foot to create Lot One, of one thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight point five square feet. Erect a new, three-story residential-unit townhouse with bay overhang on a public way and a public parking garage, a parking garage on ground floor on Lot One. The violation's Article fifty-three, Section fifty-seven point two, conformity of existing building alignment. Article fifty-three, Section nine, lot area is insufficient. Article fifty-three, additional lot area is insufficient. Article fifty-three, Section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-three, Section nine, the building height is excessive. Article fifty-three, Section nine, usable open space is insufficient. Article fifty-three, Section nine, the sideyard is insufficient. And Article fifty-three, Section nine, the raya is insufficient. This is building code for three to five Lamson. Section seven eighty C M R, eighth edition, three two zero two, Section thirty-two point two, three point two, windows, balconies, and architectural features and mechanical equipment. Name and address for the record, please.
This is Patrick Mahoney of Adams &amp; Maranci with a business address of three fifty West Broadway. And with me is Doug Stefanoff of Stefanoff Architects of four thirty-two West Broadway.
Quick summary of the proposal, please.
There's four separate parcels at the corner of Lamson Street and Lamson Court, and they are being combined and then subdivided to erect on the corner of Lamson Court and Lamson Street, a two-family building positioned as two townhouses, approximately thirteen hundred square feet. And to the left of that, three dash five Lamson Court is erecting a three-family building in the same positioning of three townhouses, thirteen hundred square feet, with one parking space each. There have been some violations eliminated.
Could you speak just for a moment specifically to the building code?
Certainly. The building code is intrusion into a public way, and initially, we were seeking relief for that, but it's, after our discussion with the architect, we've decided that the violation is only six inches, is because for every inch above eight feet, you're allowed to protrude out one inch, providing you don't exceed two-thirds of the public way. And here, that difference is six inches, and discussed with the architect in the hall, and he's, we've concluded that it's not a problem with the design to reduce that amount. That's correct. We'll withdraw that.
Motion to deny petition.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Okay.
Okay. The zoning violations that have been eliminated are traffic visibility on the corner lot, and the reason for that is because we have an existing building alignment or modal alignment here of zero, and where no front yard is required, that section of the application of the mental requirements doesn't apply. Additionally, I would like to mention that this Lamson Court is a very small street. It's not a throughway. I don't know the exact number of houses, but there's less than ten houses on the street, so it isn't a high-traveled road, if there was any concern with that.
Has this property been before this board?
It has, and it was approved by this board. There was an issue with advertising, one violation, so we had to go through the process again. But to some benefit, by going through the process again, the building changed a little bit. Initially, there was a mezzanine room, a bedroom on the top floor that's been removed. There's some of the ornamental detail and moldings and cladding on the mansard-style roof has been improved at the request of the neighbors. Additionally, there was two parking spaces before, and much of the neighborhood required us to do one. So, there has been some interior design changes and architectural additions.
And how does the access to the parking work?
There's some of the ornamental detail and moldings and cladding on the, on the Mansour style roof has been improved at the request of the neighbors. Additionally, there was two parking spaces before, and much of the neighborhood required us to do one. So, there has been some interior design changes and architectural additions.
And how does the access to the parking work?
It's one car space in a garage off of Lamson Court.
The building code violation is only for 1 and 1A, not for 3 and 5, is that correct?
It's, it's for both, Mr. Pizzani. It's because the, it's, the protrusion of the bay is at 10 feet, and it extends out 30 inches. And IBC, Chapter 23, essentially says every, it can go, it can protrude out on a public way.
But, that's all moved, right?
Yes, I just was clarifying, yeah.
Yeah.
So, the bay will still exist, it just will only protrude out 24 inches in mean compliance.
Okay. How are the drawings, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate.
Does anyone here wants to speak in favor of the project?
Madam Chair, members of the board, glad you're here. From the mayor's office of neighborhood services, we'd like to go on record in support of this proposal. They went through an extensive community process. We only ask that they continue to work with the director of others, especially during the construction period, given that this is a small street. Also, the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association voted in support of this proposal.
Good afternoon, members of the board, Salvatore-Lavettina, City Councilor. I also like to go on record in support. Just ask that the developer continue to work with the immediate abboter who was on vacation, who did not have the chance to attend some of the meetings. And so, we made that connection today, so, thank you.
Is anyone here to speak in opposition? Let's pledge to the board.
Motion for approval of BPDA design review.
Second.
All vote in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You're all set.
Thank you.
Now, we're into the 1130 cases. I will say it one more time, are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 1130? Address?
95 Calumet Street.
Hold on, calling in for the record. For the record, calling BOA 647-490, 95 Calumet Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Peter Vanco, 67 Kemble Street, fourth floor. Yes, we're seeking deferral today for this project, to say we need a little bit more time with community. As well, we need an updated violation letter from ISD because we're proposing a significant reduction in unit count.
Will the significant reduction in unit count change significantly the violations?
It will indeed. It may actually make the FAR violation a moot point, as well, we, we're proposing to do our unit work entirely with the, within the existing building. We have an enormously large building, an enormously large lot. We're going to attempt a six-unit proposal that we think is more feasible, whereas we're currently nine, and...
Okay, okay. We don't need to get into the, we're going to defer. Those motions to defer, is there a second?
Second.
All vote in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
July 25th.
Excellent, thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals? Hearing none, I'll call the first case, calling BOA 658-690, 192 Belgrade Avenue. This is to change occupancy from a commercial to residential, a conversion of one freestanding one-story building on the same lot of residential two-family known as 3 Newburg Street. Is 3 Newburg tied in with this one? Do you have two cases here?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to call that one for the record as well. The project involves rehabbing of 192 Belgrade Avenue. There is a companion case, BOA 658-68A, 3 Newburg Street. I'm going to call the violations for Belgrade first. Article 67, Section 56, off-street parking requiring insufficient parking; Article 67, Section 9, dimensional regulations that affluent residential sub-district is an excessive FAR extension of living space into the basement. This is for 3 Newburg Street. There will be no construction work or alterations of any kind performed in the two-family at 3 Newburg. The violation is Article 67, Section 56, off-street parking requirements. Name and address for the record, please.
John De Angelis, 172 Keatridge Street, Roseland, Mass. 02.
So, I'm just confused. I live on Newburg Street at the other end, however, and I just realized that we needed clarification here, because it sounds like really all you're asking for is for work to be done at 192 Belgrade.
That's correct. The hearing we had about a month and a half ago, I clarified that the...
So, let me just get it straight.
Oh, sorry.
If, if, if the only thing that's before us is Belgrade, we can then take off Newburg off of the agenda, right? Because there's no construction on Newburg.
There's no construction being done there. I was told when I submitted the architectural plans that I would have to...
It's a separate lot? Is it a separate lot?
It's, no, no, it's the same lot, so there's a two-family on the corner, the same lot, and there's this freestanding little building. That's mine.
So, it's two buildings on the same lot?
Yes.
Okay. And your request is for 192 Belgrade to convert that little office into a residential unit?
A one-bedroom residential unit, correct.
And how big is that space?
The 192?
Yeah.
So, public records, based on public records, 688 square feet. I'm here with my architect, he may add some...
I'm Nick Pellucci from Mass Architect. The, the first floor is 435 square feet. The records show 688 square feet total, and we assume that they include the basement in that number.
Yes, but the basement is totally and completely underground.
Right.
So that, in, in essence, the 435 square feet is what we're working with.
That, and we are, I would like to incorporate that, the basement space is part of the unit, refinish it, and, and via a spiral staircase, create a negress in the back. There is a bulkhead that can be reconfigured in a way that there will be stairs going on ground level.
How are the drawings, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate.
What is the floor-to-ceiling height in the basement?
Right now, it's about eight foot eight from the slab to the bottom of the joist.
What will it finish up?
Eight and a half feet.
I do have one question. On the first floor, you have a bedroom and a kitchen and living room. You go down the spiral stair to the basement, and that's where the bathroom is, but that's called a den. So, why don't you just, what keeps you from putting more, the question is, what really keeps you from putting the bedroom in the basement?
Yeah.
And then you have a situation where you have a room without any light.
So, originally, the owner wanted a second bedroom downstairs, and we were going to put a window, window well, get light down there. And we tried a number of layouts and tried to fit a bed in that space, and it's just not really doable.
Just very sacrificed because of the spiral staircase being rather large as a second mino V grass, it's just eating up a lot of space, so it doesn't make any sense that they have a bedroom. I, I thought of it as a den, and, and I'm talking to my architect to see if I should still add some, some extra light, but the idea is that since space is a minimum upstairs, they call that space in the front of the kitchen and living room, so I would have...
I actually have another concern, and that is that that space has its own independent means of egress and ingress. And so, the question comes about is, why would you not simply get rid of the spiral stair and slip a second unit?
Oh, a second you, oh, man. I, I can understand the concern because I, I, I know people that would think that way, but I sincerely would feel claustrophobic, and so, such a small space upstairs, I would definitely need a second level to this little unit.
Have you thought about doing it right and adding a second story and making it a true workable space?
I thought of it, but financially, it wouldn't, it wouldn't make much sense. Right now, cost of contractors, they're asking crazy outrageous numbers. They're all busy, and so, I'm just keeping my costs at a reasonable amount, let's put it this way.
Does anybody would like to speak in favor of the project?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Ellis and Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, on behalf of Dan Murphy, we'd like to go on record in support.
Anybody to speak in opposition? Or motion for the board?
It's your chair, right? So, I can make a motion? Motion for denial.
Is there a second on the board?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Opposed. Okay. Okay, who's in favor?
I'm in favor.
Okay. Then the motion for denial passes.
Calling next case, calling BOA 670-487, 1 to 3 Dunbarton Road. I've been informed that the proponent is withdrawing, so I make a motion for denial without prejudice.
What was that? Next one?
Second.
Second.
All right, it's been denied.
Denied, denied, sorry.
Case BOA 657-398, 12 Hubbard Street. This is to extend living space to the basement and create a new dwelling unit. Two-family dwelling will remain the same. Work to include new egress in the basement and add partition walls in bathroom and kitchenette. The violation is Article 55, Section 9, excessive FAR; Article 55, Section 8, basement units are forbidden. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Ben Foreman, 12 Hubbard Street. I'm the homeowner, and I'm joined by Jason Hindbeck, the project architect.
When you were here last time, it was the issue of the size of the unit, right? And you were asked to come back, whether it was slightly revised plans, do you know that?
Yeah, we do.
Yes.
Want to strive for changes?
Yes, and we thank you for the opportunity to hear this again and your excellent suggestion to increase the size of the unit. We came in with plans originally with 420 square feet of living space. We've been able to add additional space, as you suggested, subtracting from the mechanical room, so the unit is now 480 square feet of living space.
Mr. Pizzani, have you looked at the revised drawings?
I do. Drawings are adequate.
Okay. Any comments on the changes?
No. I think they were, they missed it, and I think you know, better unit.
Is anyone here to speak in favor of the project?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Ellis and Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, on behalf of Alex Valdez, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Anyone here to speak in opposition? With the pleasure of the board.
A motion to approve continued BPDA design review.
Second.
All vote in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You're all set.
Calling BOA 657-089, 157-157A, Howard Avenue. This is to erect a three-family dwelling with roof deck, exterior red deck, front balcony, and three off-street parking on an existing vacant lot. The violation is Article 50, Section 29, additional lot area is insufficient; Article 50, Section 29, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive; Article 50, Section 29, usable open space is insufficient; Article 50, Section 29, side yard is insufficient; and Article 50, Section 44.2, conformity of an existing building alignment. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Mai Fang at 204 Adams Street in Dorchester, Mass. 02122.
I'm sorry, Lisa Beasley, 159 Howard Ave, Dorchester, Mass. 02125.
Alphonse Beasley, Jr., on 159 Howard Ave, Dorchester, Mass.
Okay, I want to summarize the...
Yes, this project is proposed, a three-family in the vacant lot is only for 3F, 4,000. The family, the Beasley family have been living in the next door with the vacant lot over 25 years, and the proposed building would be occupied by the family members.
So, can you, what are the violations? Can you address what the violations are?
Yes, the, the last size is a requirement for 4,000, and we have a 4,330 square feet, and a little bit over the FAR, the requirement was .8. We, a little over...
What's that?
.82. The building height is okay. The front yard is 20 feet, but we have three feet in one side and seven feet from the other. The side yard, 10 feet. We have 10 feet to one side, and the other side, we have a 7.88 feet. And the rear yard is okay.
And why will you defer?
I'm sorry?
Why will you defer?
Because I couldn't make it to the meeting here, and I asked my colleagues to come here earlier, but some question that he couldn't answer because he wasn't, he'd never been in the site before, so that was my error.
So, this is three-family, and you, you will own it and live in it?
Yeah.
And rent two units?
Yes. And we went to, we have a butters and neighbors meeting, and they were fully support, and we also went to the project, right, civic association, and we got fully support from them as well.
How are the drawings, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate.
Is anyone here to speak in favor of the project?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Ellis and Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, on behalf of Josh McFadden, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Anyone here to speak in opposition? Pleasure to the board.
Motion to approve exterior work?
New construction.
New construction, yes. Motion to approve BPDA review.
All vote in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling next case, calling BOA 665-759, 145 to 145 East Berkeley Street. This is an addition on the first floor on the back of a restaurant kitchen. Back of a restaurant kitchen. Violation is Article 9, Section 1, extension of a non-conforming use is conditional; Article 64, Section 19, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive; Article 64, Section 19, the rear yard setback is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Daniel Surian, 128 Cambridge Street, Charleston, Mass.
Joel O'Von 145 East Berkeley Street, Boston, Mass.
Okay, what are the violations that you're here for?
Well, we had an initial here in a tent in Mass Ave, and there was a dispute with the abboter next door, which has been resolved.
In what way?
Was this at the committee meeting?
It was also here. It was here, both there and here. So, so what's the ownership and the access? I think that was the issue, the access.
Right, exactly. Correct. These two buildings share one egress door, so we provided an additional egress door to him.
And he's got the plans?
Do we have a set of plans that reflect that?
Yeah, the drawing shows that.
All right, while we're waiting on Mr. Pizzani to look at drawings, does anyone want to speak in support of the project?
Right, exactly. It's a double unit, providing a new order.
Good afternoon. Madam Chair, members of the board, Sam Chambers, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. The applicant has a letter from the, the support of the Old Dover Neighborhood Association, and they're alongside Restaurant in the Neighborhood, so we would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
From a procedural point of view, they have no documentation as to what it is that they're posting.
Have we held signature?
We should defer.
Well, see, Mr. Pizzani, we hold signature, but we don't...
No, no, because I'm going to have to sign the drawing.
All right, so you want to defer?
Motion to defer.
Second.
All vote in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we need to come back with...
With an updated plans.
Yeah.
Correct.
Subcommittee of this hall.
You got a date? You got a date? Mr. Ford's just gonna give you a date.
Before you leave, so we have a subcommittee meeting that's gonna happen June twenty-second or July twentieth? I don't know what we want. All right, so let's do June twenty-second. That's a subcommittee down at ten-ten Mass Ave.
One second.
Yep.
Five p.m. Five. Okay, thank you.
Calling the next case, the last case for eleven-thirty, calling BOA six-eight-six four-six-five two-thirteen Harrison Avenue. This is a change of occupancy from a retail store to a beauty spa to include massage therapy, installation of interior partition walls. Violation is article forty-three, section nineteen, use of beauty spa inclusive to massage therapy is in conditional use. Name and address for the record, please.
For the record, my name is attorney Jack P. Milgram, represent the applicant. My address is twenty-one McGrath Highway, Unit two-zero-three Quincy, Mass. zero-two-one-six-nine. I have for the board this afternoon my client's application for a change of use, two-thirteen Harrison Avenue. According to the most recent statute of occupancy, there's five units in this building. There's four commercial units. I'm sorry, there's four residential units in this one commercial unit. The proposal is a change of use in the commercial unit from retail to beauty spa accusing massage therapy. In the event...
Excuse me, so why were you deferred the last time?
I'm sorry?
Why were you deferred?
Because when I went to the subcommittee meeting at ten-ten Mass Ave, there wasn't a letter from Neighborhood Services.
Okay, do you have that now?
I don't have a letter from Neighborhood Services. After the subcommittee meeting, I corresponded by email with Neighborhood Services, and they told me that they were gonna come here and that they're gonna ask that the petition be allowed. But I do not have an actual letter.
Okay, well, that's a testimony, and I make it due to...
That's fine.
Mr. Pizzani, do you have the drawings?
Drawings are adequate.
Okay, is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor of the applicant?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, on behalf of Denny Ching, we would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Is anyone here to speak in opposition?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All in favor?
Thank you.
Okay.
We're going right to the hearing recommendations. Give me two seconds here.
Approved.
Okay, you gonna read all the cases, Mark?
I will. Here we go. So case BOA six-nine-five six-three-eight eighty-one Pearl Street was to confirm a single-family dwelling. It was approved. Case BOA six-eight-nine nine-nine-four three-me Court, it was an addition onto the front, a single resident. It was approved. Case BOA six-eight-seven nine-two-six two-Ludlow Street, it was a floor-to-air ratio is excessive, rear yard setback was approved with BPDA. Case BOA six-eight-five zero-eight-two seven-Ringgold Street, it was approved, the floor-to-air ratio was excessive in real lot line. Case BOA six-seven-six seven-five-zero fifty-six Jamaica Street, it was constructed in additions on both sides of existing single-family residential. It was approved with BPDA. Case BOA six-eight-four five-nine-two ninety-Floyd Street was expanding into the attic, master suite, was approved. Case BOA six-nine-seven zero-five-five twelve Waterflow Street, it was a curb-cut parking for two vehicles. It was approved. Case BOA six-six-four nine-five-seven two-eighty-nine Washington Street, it was a change of art from newspaper store to office. It was deferred to seven-twenty at five p.m. July twentieth. Case BOA six-nine-three nine-three-seventh thirty-rueda Road was to remove an existing sunroom and adding two floors of crawl space. It was approved. BOA six-nine-three two-three-two-zero seventeen Sedalia Road was to construct a new roof and shed dormer and extend living space to the attic. It was approved with BPDA. Case BOA six-eight-eight one-two-eight three-Fairview Street was a master suite conversion and extending third-floor attic space. It was approved. Case BOA six-nine-two four-one-one two-ninety-eight Vermont Street was an addition to the second floor to an existing house, two new bathrooms, two new bedrooms. It was approved. And case BOA six-eight-one four-four-three eighty-nine Antwerp Street was to change occupancy from a one-family into a two-family and erect a vertical addition. It was approved with BPDA. That concludes the mini-subcommittee meeting.
Entertained a motion to concur with the recommendations of the subcommittee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Leading the term. All right. So we have the... All right. Sorry. All right. 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 All right.